City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burris.
Yes.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman John Patrice. Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you. Welcome to the first city council budget workshop meeting, and I'm delighted that you're all here. I want you to know that in years past, we have had meetings with one or two members of the public attending our budget meeting. I am glad to see we have solved that problem. I will have to leave the meeting at 10 o'clock. I apologize. I will certainly hear everyone's comments and watch a video of the meeting. I have to attend a very important mayor's meeting to discuss police and fire pensions, which impact our budget this year and in years to come. So I do have to leave at 10:00, and my apologies because of that. I am going to take my prerogative as mayor and discuss the library briefly. The only thing that I think may not be known in all the emails and phone conversations that I've had is that years ago, when I was the 7th Ward Alderman, we were willing to fundraise to support the libraries, and we were told at that time that we could not fundraise to support the libraries because the main branch was doing its own fundraising for the teen loft. So there is a very strong group of people who are willing to pay to support the branch libraries. I had hoped that a special taxing district would be a possibility. I am told by our attorneys that it may not be a possibility, but, Mr. City Manager, there is a large group of people willing to pay money to support these branch libraries. And I think that knowing that that group exists, we should find a way to let them pay the money and support the branch libraries. That being said, we will take citizen comments for two minutes per person. We have, I think, more than 50 people who have signed up to speak. I'm going to call your names, and if you would go and stand over by the podium and wait your turn, that would be helpful so we could proceed more quickly. And if someone has already said what you plan to say, you can just say that you agree with that speaker. I promise you that the council is an excellent council, very attentive, and are paying attention. We don't need to say the same thing over and over again in order to make an impression, but please just say, "I agree with the points the previous speaker made," and that would be helpful. So, thank you again for coming and--
Madam Mayor, before you start calling, perhaps we could ask the people who are standing along this corner, because we're going to ask the folks who are going to be speaking to line up there, if you could either move outside or--
I apologize. I think we've run out of seats, but there may still be some out there, and it is televised so you can see everything that's happening.
So if we can clear that area there for folks who are lining up to speak. Thank you very much.
And I've been, thank you, City Clerk, asked to let everyone know traditionally, we end our meeting, the budget workshop meetings, because we have many of them, between around 12:00 or between 12:00 and 1:00. So that will be the ending time. The first speakers are Kit Elliott, Brian Scott, Marty, Marty, I'm going to blow your last name, Debbie Kieser, and Jody Gross. Kit, if you'd start and give your name and address, please. Thank you.
My name is Kit Elliott. I live at 732 Michigan. I'd like you to imagine a day without your daily paper at the door, without your internet access, probably a fast connection, at home or at the office, without your favorite magazine coming in the mail, without that expensive newspaper arriving via email, without a bookshelf in your living room. Hard to imagine, isn't it? Sounds as if it is pretty easy to imagine that life for your neighbors. All you have to do is vote to close the branch libraries. Go to Maine. Well, tell that to the young mother pushing a stroller loaded with groceries and holding a toddler by the hand. Tell that to the elderly man struggling in the snow with his cane. Tell that to the disabled youngsters from Park School who walk to South Branch and know it is a safe and friendly place to learn. Tell that to the young children who are not allowed to take public transportation by themselves. Tell that to those who cannot afford to ride the L or cannot physically get to the main or need the friendly, caring human contact of the branch library. Closing the branch libraries is a clearly discriminatory move against all those who don't have the daily paper at their door, don't have internet access, don't have a bookshelf in their living room, don't have daily human contact. Closing the branch libraries will slam shut the literacy door to the young mother, the struggling elderly, the eager youth, the disabled student. That is discrimination, and that is not what Evanston is all about. Evanston has always prided itself on being all-inclusive, not just a pretty face. Have we changed? Are we more interested now in decorative brick sidewalks than in nurturing minds? Your support of the branch libraries will tell us your view of the future of Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. For those who may not know, my name is Bryant Scott. I'm an 11-year veteran of the Evanston Fire Department, and I'm also a proud member and president of the Evanston Firefighters Association, IEFF Local 742. I have a duty to stand before you this morning because within today's budget, there's some proposed reductions by the city staff that will have a very negative and significant impact on public safety. What city staff is proposing are what they call fire department redeployments to trim $275,000 from the fire department budget. Now, what these redeployments actually mean is every time our normal and regular shift staffing drops below 26, a fire company, an engine or truck, will be placed out of service for the duration of the shortage. Now, Fire Chief Bukowski has told me just yesterday that he expects a minimum of 250 of these shortages or brownouts in the next year. It's over 70% of the year. Now, the citizens of Evanston pay top dollar for their fire protection under the assumption that their elected officials will make the most informed decisions possible regarding their safety. Therefore, both these groups have a right to know the real relationship between these reductions and their life safety and their property protection. And the impact is going to be in two critical areas. First, you should know that this department is already critically understaffed by every industry standard and community comparable, and additional reductions in staffing will only advance its already unsafe condition. It should also not go unnoticed that this department has already been cut by 8% for budget reductions in the last 25 years. And during that same exact time, our call volume has gone up over 60%. The implications are serious with reduced manning. Critical fire ground and emergency tasks get delayed or go undone, and this proportionally increases the risk to civilians and firefighters and makes us less effective at our jobs. Secondly, the impact will affect our response times. They will noticeably increase. Presently, firefighters and paramedics are able to respond to 96% of this city in under four minutes, and we take great pride in that fact based upon the simple reality that reduced response times save lives. For example, in the case of a cardiac arrest, when firefighter or paramedics can respond in under four minutes, that victim's survivability goes from less than 5% to 35%. That's a sevenfold increase. That's a reality that's all too true for people like Mr. Charlie McNeil, Mr. Brian Redding, or Mr. Hussein Halavich, who were saved by EFD paramedics and their timely response in the last year. And of course, just less than a week ago, Truck Company 23 saves a woman in an NU retention pound who was treading for her life because they had a quick response time in under two minutes. In closing, let me state that the firefighters fully appreciate the gravity of the current economic situation and the tough measures that the city staff and council have to consider in order for this city to operate within its budgetary means. Local 742 would very much like to continue our good faith efforts in working with the city to offer viable solutions that will not impact public safety. We know these options exist, and they exist even within our own department. But let me be perfectly clear. We must not place civilians and firefighters at additional risk purely for budgetary expediency. I know many of you in this room have a solid appreciation of our job--
You are going to have to wrap it up. Sorry.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. I will wrap it up right now. I know many in you in this room have a solid appreciation of our job and the type of commitment we've made to this city. Our job is tough, labor-intensive, and time-critical, but the members of Local 742 do it with pride and professionalism every day because you count on us. But we count on you to do the right thing here. We count on you to give us the resources we need to execute our mission of public safety. Of course, I'll be happy to take any questions you have at this time, and I'd like to make a personal invitation to every member of the council to sit down and meet with you personally on this public safety issue to give it the time it really deserves. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, council, for hearing us. I'm Martin Raphus, Vice President of Local 742, and I'll forego my time. President Scott has reiterated, I would just be reiterating everything he says. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Debbie Kieser.
I'm Debbie Kieser.
Kieser.
And I agree with the previous speaker on the library issue.
Thank you very much. Jody Gross, Lori Keenan, Jeff Smith, and Michael Tannen.
I'm Jody Gross, and I too agree with the previous speaker about the library issue.
Thank you so much.
I'm Lori Keenan, and I'd like to defer my time, except I won't. I have a lot to say.
That's all right. You're welcome to say it. That's what we're here for.
And I've been here before, and it's deja vu all over again. On the wall of our dining room, we have an artwork listing the ABCs of life, and A is accept differences, and Z is zealously support a worthy cause. That's why I live in Evanston. That's why I want to raise my kids here, and that's why I'm here before you today. The definition of insanity is coming and doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different outcome. But I'm saying, let's look at this as 2010, new decade. Let's not look back. Let's look forward. Over the past decade, I've been here before the city council numerous times to fight to save the branch libraries. In fact, when I went to set up an online petition this time, there was already a petition from three years ago, so we just reopened the petition. Today, that petition has 800 signatures in the past week. Only 1,000 people even filled out the city survey about where the budget cuts should come from. Of those, only 40 people said to cut the libraries. Forty people out of a community of 74,000. Even then, it was number 10 on their list of preferred cuts. Now, I'm an English major, and my calculator couldn't even do the math. It was such a minuscule percentage. It's hardly representative of the community's pulse on this subject. 60,000 people use libraries every month. It's the entire population of Evanston through the doors in five weeks. In a down economy, the branch library use is up as much as 30%. In studies done by various states, including Maine, South Carolina, and Florida, on the economic impact of libraries, economic impact of libraries on the community, they determine that for every dollar spent, it returns $4 to $6 to the community. So now, let's think about it. Conversely, what would a $400,000 cut per year do exponentially in terms of detriment to the economy of our city? In a report called Making Cities Stronger, which you're each going to get, which was by the Public Library, Making Cities Stronger: Public Library Contributions to the Local Economic Development, was done by the Urban Institute and by the Urban Library Council, which ironically used to be in Evanston. It was funded by the Bill and Melissa Gates Foundation. They note that, quote, "There has been a shift in the role of public libraries from passive recreational reading and research institutions to active economic development agents. Public libraries build a community's capacity for economic activity and resiliency, never mind community and literacy." Rather than closing branches, we should be opening even more of them to revitalize neighborhoods, to anchor floundering retail, to help at-risk kids foster a love of learning through early literacy outreach programs. The branches now support, and I wasn't aware of this until I started to look into it, but the branches themselves now support the restorative justice system of the Evanston Police Department. Branch library supporters understand the intrinsic value which these small gems bring to a community in a way which the main library never can. We would support the use of, the growth of, a branch system in our community. I've often said that the committed, talented, enthusiastic volunteers of Evanston could run a small nation. In the past week, I've spoken to grant writers, attorneys, librarians, teachers, the Urban Library Council, Aldermen Kids, Parents, the Library Board, Merchants Association, the San Francisco Library Friends, which runs 16 branches through a public-private agreement, who have offered their help, all of them have offered their help, and to counsel us.
Lori, you're going to have to wrap it up.
I will try. Everyone I've spoken to is willing to help. There's a motivated, intelligent group of Evanston residents willing to work for this. So I would ask you today for a one-year reprieve to allow us to get ourselves organized in moving forward, to find and fund a viable, long-term economic solution for the branch discussion once and for all. As Alderman Holmes' email signature by Gandhi states, "Be the change you want to see in the world. Help us help Evanston. Please don't close our branch libraries."
Thank you. I'm supposed to round the speakers. Please give your name and address.
Jeff Smith, 2724 Harrison. In this argument over the branch libraries, we have to realize that we're talking about the cost of approximately one CD, and I don't mean certificate of deposit, one musical or video DVD to each household in Evanston per year. Since the argument has been made primarily on economic terms, I'd like to give an economic argument because, as with many governmental decisions, it seems that we're taking into account only the possible savings and discounting the actual and real costs to the city. The costs of closure of branches that serve 130,000 or more users per year has to be taken into account. Where will those visitors go? If they go to the main library, even if the main library is open 365 days a year, that results in an additional 30 users per hour coming through the doors. If the current main library is adequately and optimally staffed, additional staff will have to be hired or additional hours put on in order to accommodate those additional users. That's not taken into account in the equation. If the users don't go to the main library and simply disappear, or, for example, go up to Wilmatt to use the library, they will take their purchasing dollars with them because most of the visits to the branch libraries are combined with other shopping trips. In any case, there is a cost of the diminution of the educational purpose of libraries, and we have to take into account that it is an educational purpose, both under state law and the original charters of these institutions. There's also a cost in the perception of the city. Our vision revolves around trying to build Evanston as a center of knowledge work, as a place where intellectual capital is valued. What does it say about a city if it's closing its libraries? There's also a cost in land value. If, as is evident from the people here, people value their libraries and move here, move to neighborhoods in part because of the accessibility of these institutions, then it stands to reason that closing those libraries will result in a diminution of value, which ultimately rebounds to the city in terms of lowered revenue, if for no other reason than with transfer taxes. Second, there's user costs. If the libraries have value to the people who use them, then you're imposing the costs of closure upon the constituency that uses them. If people have to go out and buy books or other things to replace them, then they're going to have less money to spend on other things that they might spend in the city. There is a third cost, which is the cost of stimulus. If you are going to try and stimulate a local economy, you might build a library there. Therefore, logically, if you're closing a library, it's an anti-stimulus measure. It will be the opposite of an economic stimulus to both North Evanston and to South Evanston. There's been an argument made, and it's a compelling one, that there's a lack of equity in the current distribution of the branch libraries. If there is an equity with any governmental resource, the answer is not to increase the deprivation or the lack of that resource across the wider population. The answer would be to work to open another branch library on the west side.
Could you wrap it up?
I will. I concur with Lori Keenan that we should keep these libraries open long enough to have a chance to create an independent district. If this, a city like Evanston can build a million-dollar bathroom on the beach, we can certainly keep our libraries open. If we cannot do both and faced with the choice, we choose to close the libraries, then I suggest that we need to reexamine our priorities. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Michael Tannen. I live at 1010 Elmwood. I have two children who are aged eight and three. We have been using the Evanston Branch Library since 2004. My son Sam is here today reading a book. Hi, Sam. I always say that when we use the branch libraries, it's like the neighborhood equivalent of cheers. Sam walks into the library, and everyone says, "Hi, Sam." I am a big fan of Jane Jacobs, who in 1961 wrote the book, The Death and Life of Great American Cities. In several pages, she talked about the different functions that main libraries and branch libraries perform. They serve different functions. Study after study demonstrates that branch libraries are actually more important social and economic institutions than main branches. And in fact, another thing that all of you are going to get is the Urban Library Council's pamphlet called The Engaged Library, which talks about how important branch libraries have been in revitalizing communities in the city of Chicago. People from all walks of life use the library, branch libraries during all times of day, all week long. People will stop at the Central Street Library. They'll go to the spice shop. They'll go to the bread shop. They'll go to the map store. That is a secondary, type of secondary uses that Jane Jacobs and the Urban Library Council's talk about, and it's very important. In the last 10 days, like Lori said, I've talked to teachers, librarians, business owners, senior citizens. At 6:00 this morning, I opened up my email to receive a letter from Henrietta Ganzer, 92-years-old, who sent a letter to all of you talking about how important it is that they keep the branch libraries open. Near the Central Street, the North Branch, Haven, Kingsley, Lincolnwood, Willard, and St. Az are all within walking distance of the North Branch. That's roughly 2,000 students. Near the South Branch, Lincoln, Nichols, and Park are all located within walking distance of the South Branch. These libraries are very important to the students. They're very important to everyone, and if you give us the time, we will figure this out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Emily Guthrie, Maria Rosen, Karen Rosen, and DeKalph Fonda.
Hi, my name is Maria Rosen. I live on 24, 24 Central Street, and I want to keep the library open. I love the library. You can choose a book and read or check out a book. You can sit in the big chair. Students can learn, can sit and learn. It's cozy and peaceful to me. It's like my second home. That's the reason I think we should keep the library. A city, the town, the neighborhood, the townspeople love it and want to keep the library. Like my mom said, it's the heart of the community. My friend and I, once in the winter, tried to go there to the library together for a made-up book club because we loved that library. The librarian's warm smiles always greeted me, and when we borrowed books from the library, we helped save paper instead of getting your own copy. Please help with effort to persuade people to keep this wonderful library.
Thank you.
Thank you. She wrote that herself, by the way. Karen Rosen, also 2324 Central. And I'm here, actually, there's a lot of support for the library, as can be seen here. And so I'm going to speak about the Children's Dental Clinic. I'm a single parent of this beautiful daughter, and two years ago, I lost my job. I was without work for a year, and about six or seven didn't have insurance and dental insurance, and we found the Children's Dental Clinic. And it was a tremendous resource for us. I mean, I did not have the money at that point to pay for dental care for my daughter. And it was a tremendous resource. We went there. They were very kind and very competent and very helpful. And I have to say that during that time of being unemployed for almost a year, I thought a lot about the citizens of Evanston who do not have the financial resources to pay for health and medical care, and how stressful that was for me, but how stressful that must be for people who, all the time, don't have the resources to take their child to the dentist. So it's a great resource, and I know that you have a lot of considerations in mind, but I do want to call your attention to that wonderful resource that helps the citizens of Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. I'm DeKalph Fonda. I'm a 30-year resident of the 2nd Ward, and I'm speaking to you today on behalf of Stop the Box, which was a grassroots citizens group that was formed about two years ago to fight the invasion of the VRADES utility, huge utility boxes that AT&amp;T have put on our parkways. We lost that fight. Actually, we all lost that fight. What we don't want to lose now is our only community media center in Evanston. Our state legislators decided for all of us, in the name of competition, that AT&amp;T could occupy our green parkways. The only light in this dark scenario was the 6% franchise fee that AT&amp;T would pay to the city, as Comcast does, for the use of the public ways, a percentage of which was appropriately earmarked for the Evanston media, Community Media Center. Your hands were tied in many ways by the state on this AT&amp;T debacle. We know that. But they are not tied now as you decide the fate of ECMC. We understand that cuts are unavoidable and difficult sacrifices have to be made. We are all, as families and individuals, making sacrifices and triaging our financial priorities as citizens here, and so must the city in this difficult time. But from a community perspective, it would be a travesty for Evanston to end up with about 90 huge, unsightly, and loud utility boxes on our valuable parkways for generations to come, and to not at least use the fees generated by this blight to keep our only community media outlet alive and functioning. Noncorporate, independent community media is essential to an informed public. In fact, it is the cornerstone of a democracy. That is not a sacrifice that the city should be willing to make. We ask that you continue to fund ECMC at a level that makes it possible for them to continue operating at full capacity. Thanks.
Alderman Burris.
I have a question for either Marty Lyons or Mr. Bobkowitz about the last speaker's comments about the franchise fees and what is the legal obligation in the written contract for the franchise fees to go to the media center? I just want a clarification, because I'm not sure that I've asked for one, and I'm not sure that I have a full understanding of our exact responsibility. Thank you.
I'll allow that, but then let's just go through public comments and discuss this when we get to budget discussions. Otherwise, the people who've come here are not going to get a chance to have their say.
Madam Mayor, Alderman Burris. The short answer is that there is no obligation. We have a full presentation at the appropriate time.
Emily Guthrie. Marcia, I'm going to massacre the last name. Rurnston, 1213 Maple, who's here to discuss ECMC. I'm sorry for whatever I just did to your name. Stan Spiller, Cindy Court, and Jenny Sarki, who's here for ECMC. I have called Emily Guthrie twice. Emily, I know you're--
I've been shaking my head at you.
No. Okay. You're always shaking your head at me now. How am I supposed to? Sorry. Would you go ahead?
Do I take it from that that Emily passed?
Emily passed, yes.
I am Marcia Burnston, and you actually did a wonderful job, a much better job than people usually do. I am here, I do live at 1213 Maple. I'm here on behalf of ECMC. I'm also here in my capacity as one of the founding members of the North Shore Coalition for Justice, Peace, and the Environment. ECMC partners with the Coalition to make available Democracy Now!, which is one of the only independent media outlets to get real news, not corporate news. And to lose that in the city of Evanston would be huge. There are people who can get-- There are people who can get D now on the Internet, but I know with one of my other hats, North Suburban Peace Initiative, that there are a large percentage of the population in the city of Evanston that doesn't have Internet access and who does not use the Internet on a regular basis. So to lose our cable access, to lose community cable access, would be a travesty to have an informed citizenry. So, as DeKalb had said, we would strongly recommend that we get full funding for ECMC because it is a vital part of keeping our population informed. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Stanley Spiller. I do not recite here, I'm from Skokie, Illinois, but I do know a lot about Evanston and Jerry Bogus and his television show. And I'm so impressed with the library people that are here because, to me, they are both, bothly connected. First of all, I come from Skokie, I'm a World War II vet, D-plus-two Normandy, all the way through, five campaigns, the Battle of the Bulge, winter, this kind of weather, surviving. I know what this is all about. I'm not a young person anymore, I'm 86, and I will be 86 on March 9th. I know my days are limited. But I'm here because I want to speak up. I'm hearing now this, the library is so important for the history of some of these young people to know what's going on. I'm not here to glorify myself, but I'm speaking for veterans that have passed away, the ones that are still able to get around but can't move around or financially are unable. Please keep them in mind. Now, what, as a combat medic, I am not a professional doctor, but I do know that from this book right here is a Jack, Jack Terry, who's a retired psychiatrist, psychologist, was 13-years-old in a concentration camp. And our division, the 90th Division liberated the Flossenberg Concentration Camp in Czechoslovakia, which I was a part of. So I know a little bit about these, what went on. Remember, you young people are here, we want to keep this alive. How can we do it? Through what we're doing, and Jerry's doing with his group and the library. And that is to let them understand, let them grow, and know a little about the Holocaust. I am very familiar with the Holocaust. I also am very much into this area with veterans, or it could be here. I just found this the other night in a book that was published regarding some of the men that don't want to talk about their past, and these are men that may have had some damage in their homes.
I need you to wrap it up, please.
All right.
Two minutes per. Thank you.
I am saying, do not disturb this place, the library. The budget, I can understand what we're going through right now, but please, there must be some other place that we can cut back on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Cindy Court, 925 Wesley. I am ECMC's Board President. Thank you for your time today. The possible closure of Evanston Media Center in the media age seems absolutely unbelievable to me. We should never forget that when cable came to Evanston, the original franchise agreement included funding for public access as part of the agreement. Public access started as an agreement between cable companies and cities that cable money would go towards providing training for residents to produce their own programs and air them on public access channels. Over the years, programming produced at ECMC has been recognized with many regional and national awards, and ECMC is now widely known as one of the best cable access stations in the country. Evanston's first franchise agreement was signed in 1979. It is vitally important to remember that not a single cent of tax money was used to fund ECMC then, and that has continued to this day. Evanston Media, Community Media Center became its own nonprofit organization in 1986, and by the late 90s, a new franchise agreement was made with a cable company. Cable companies no longer provided extra funding for community access, so the city was made aware that ECMC would need a portion of the franchise fees to exist. ECMC also took on the responsibility of running the educational access for District 65 and the government access for the city of Evanston. Since that time, the city of Evanston has received franchise fees from the cable company that have increased over $500,000 during the past nine years. ECMC has received a smaller percentage every year since its inception. ECMC has also applied for several grants over the years and has done some in-house fundraising. Just recently, ECMC hosted a fundraiser called Evanston Idol, in which we had contestants from as far away as Wisconsin and the southern suburbs. We have also received several small grants over the years, but unfortunately, most grants and underwriting do not support operating costs of public access centers. We have applied to the Evanston Community Foundation, the Art Center, Rotary International, Lucky Platters Charitable Group, Romano Brothers Foundation, Allegra Printing Fund, Cable Positive, where we co-applied with the Beehive Organization in the past. We also have solicited the MacArthur Foundation and Exelon Corporation nationally and the Cherry Foundation locally. We have diligently searched for monies to cover our operating expenses. It's very tough getting outside funding for a nonprofit cable station, especially when organizations know that a cable franchise fee can be passed back to the media center. The board, the members, and the staff have worked hard to keep, to help Evanston develop new media, and together, we are looking to the future and are excited about plans to expand our use of new technology for the center, which will allow ECMC to thrive in this, the media age.
I need you to wrap up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Our doors are open to all members of residents of Evanston, and we have alumni across the country and around the world. Many of our members have proudly gone on to develop careers in national broadcasting. Please do not destroy all the hard work we have done for all these years to better ourselves and the community, to give our residents options to have their voices heard by providing training in multiple facets of media, and letting residents have the ability to be involved with their school districts and city government, and to have the workings of the city cable cast into your living room. Closure of the media center would represent a huge step backwards for Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jeannie Zanka. I live at 140 Clyde, and I'm here as the treasurer of the Board of Directors of the ECMC. In public coverage, it has been disputed whether the contention that the proposed $200,000 budget cut would shut ECMC is really true, and indeed it is. Of the $890,000 that the city of Evanston will receive in 2010 for cable franchise fees, the $348,000 that ECMC received last year constituted only 66% of its total budget for the year, with ECMC raising the remainder of that budget primarily by producing multimedia for nonprofits, for the city, and for District 65. We produce these programs, promotional materials, and other items that are cost far below what any organization would otherwise charge. Eliminating the bulk of our subsidy, as proposed, from the city will prevent us from continuing that work and will impede our ability to provide much of anything for the city or for District 65, and we need to be clear about this. With $190,000 as proposed, we will most likely be reduced to one full-time staff member, down from four. And even with the use of freelance labor, we still will probably not be able to cover the number of meetings that the city has come to expect. We've heard the suggestion that we should do some more fundraising, and as you know, since cable subscribers already pay a 5% franchise fee on their Comcast bill, it's very difficult to ask them to donate for something for which they believe they are already paying, which indeed they are. It's been suggested that by moving the ECMC to a rent-free facility, most of this money can be saved. And while our rent in the industrial park at Dempster and Hartree is costly, it's crucial to note that not only is it a facility which can house our equipment and infrastructure, which the Civic Center, for example, currently could not, but also that the city's own evaluation of the cost to move us in 2002 was between $500,000 and $800,000. Now, those are the city's numbers, and those are from 2002. What inflation would do to that, now, we cannot calculate. Since there is no attempt thus far to work with us on how the media center might be relocated, or to where, it's impossible for us to name for you any figure on what it might cost. What is clear is there will be significant upfront costs. Such a move must be carefully planned, if it is to happen. On the subject of employees, our staff is not employed by the city. They are highly trained individuals, they receive no pension, no retirement plan, and their salaries are far below what they might earn in the for-profit sector. Currently, we have four full-time and four part-time employees. The rest of the work is done by volunteers. Under the proposed budget, at least two, and likely three, of the four full-time employees will need to be eliminated. It's doubtful they'll be able to continue part-time. This does not leave us with sufficient staff to produce any media product for 65, for the city, or for the nonprofit sector in Evanston.
I am going to need you to wrap up.
Public access will end. These are not exaggerations. I need the council to be aware of what we are facing. We would very much like to work with the council, but we have not had that opportunity, and I would reiterate, we only have six weeks before you must decide this budget to do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stella, John Zostin, Scott Sanders, and I can't read this name, Bla-Hut?
Bo.
Bo. Blah. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Stella Valavanes. I live at 1823 Grant. I am on the board of the ECMC. I'm also involved in a number of other organizations, Stop the Box for one, and I also am the owner of a technology business, and I kind of represent that to some extent, to the ECMC and frankly, to Stop the Box. I think the most important thing to note is, about the ECMC, is the franchise fee that Jeannie spoke about, so I'm not going to expand on that, just to keep that in mind, that there was already this, if not in letter, but in spirit, the franchise fees meant to support public access. It's also worth noting, public access is one of four channels that the ECMC puts out. But I mainly want to respond to the argument about the new age of Internet and how that changes things, and why that makes something like the ECMC irrelevant, as some people would say. It's absolutely not the truth. With the Internet age, it's far more relevant than ever. Just like the library produces writers and readers and engaged citizens, the ECMC produces producers, citizen, you know, advocates, it produces entertainment, it produces technology, knowledgeable individuals, it produces lower fear of, of technology and access to technology. So ultimately, the ECMC is an educational organization, similar to the library. It's not just about the consumers of what comes out of the ECMC. Granted, that's our Evanston population, and that's significant, but it's also creating this generation of producers. And in the Internet age, it's more important than ever. With more distribution mechanisms, i.e. YouTube and whatnot, that's actually more relevant. Producing content with a handheld camera is great, and it's wonderful that people are doing it over the world, but ultimately, where do they go from there? They look for professional production, and they go to their local media access center to do that. If I had my way, I would have considered the library and the ECMC part of the same thing. Frankly, the Hartree-Dempster location is a wonderful place and a space for a West Side library branch, and I wish we had the funds for it. I don't envy the council's job in trying to determine how we can accomplish all these things, but I absolutely am grateful to this council, which I think is, the transparency's unprecedented. So we really appreciate, you know, the effort, and it's a very, very tough job. I don't know if I've ever seen quite the detail printed in the roundtable that's, you know, Wally's put out. So thank you very much for your hard work, but please, let's all get together as citizens and realize that we want to be the producers of content, we want to have open minds, and we want to listen to each other, we want to read each other's works, and we want to develop not, no fear of technology, but actually command of technology. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm John Zostek, 600 Main Street. I'm the executive director of Piccolo Theater, the Custer Fair, and the Evanston Arts Depot. First of all, I just want, I'm here on behalf of ECMC. I'll just give you my personal experience with ECMC. My experience with them goes back 27 years, when it was cable vision. And I went to them with a proposal to do a comedy-science-fiction series. We ran that program for a year and a half, and from that, I was hired to, on a show on NBC, and then a year and a half after that, I was given an Emmy Award. A lot of my experience in how to be on camera came from my experience at ECMC. That kind of training for people happens there all the time. Custer Fair and Piccolo Theater uses their services a lot. I'm also very involved in future technology, because we're involved in culture and entertainment and the arts, and we are integral in the life of the community in Evanston. I want to follow on just a bit about what potential there is for ECMC. We are quickly going to see in this coming year a dramatic change in how people view media and content. And Evanston should be front and center with what gems it has in this community, whether they be arts or culture, business or otherwise, because there are so many things, as we know, are secrets. People don't know about them outside of the city limits. There is great potential to be able to show people on screens of all kinds, iPhones, tablets, computer screens, large screens. And that content has to get beyond just YouTube clips. It's not good-quality work. We can go, and they know at ECMC, that we can go now into their, and our organization has plans to go in, and produce high-quality content for the Internet, so that people can see it on their television at home, their high-def television, on their iPhone, wherever, and they can get directions to what is going on, they can see our schedules, they can buy the tickets. It is so connected to a commerce of culture in Evanston, and ECMC is pivotal. There are two ways to deal with the terrible situation economically that we're in. One is to cut budgets. It's hard. I mean, it's heartbreaking to see that 47 people are going to lose their job. That's terrible. It runs at the fabric of the community. The other way is to innovate your way out of it. And ECMC is a way to innovate out of this situation and produce income, produce tourism, and produce a better image for Evanston and what it has, and attract people here. Thank you.
Don't wait for me to call, just go right up.
Hello, my name is Scott Sanders. I actually live at 2101 West Lunt in Chicago now, but 25 years ago or so, I was appointed by Mayor Joan Barr to be one of the founding trustees of ECMC, and that's what I'm here to speak about today. I also have worked as a librarian at the Skokie Public Library for 10 years, and I currently do research at the University of Chicago. I'm also here representing an organization called Chicago Media Action, which has been around for about eight years, working on various media issues of great concern to people who have concern about the public interest. Now, I think just, the most important thing, I think, here is that the decision to make such a major cut in a public media outlet at this point of time is basically upside down. We now are experiencing one of the most critical junctures in the history of media in the United States. Not only are we going through a technological change, but the funding models for the corporate media and the mainstream press have been failing left and right, and it is these public media outlets that have now become the shining stars in our media landscape, and we need to protect and enhance them, not cut them in half. It's just, it's upside down, I'm sorry. And I appreciate the fact that Evanston created this. There are only a handful of these kind of nonprofit, democratically organized media organizations that work in video, in the... organizations that work in video in the state of Illinois. So you've got something very special here you need to save and enhance. So instead of involving yourselves in something that gives this sort of impression of censorship, what I would suggest is the following three things. I would suggest that you use the coming cable franchise process, renewal process, to provide for the cost of live streaming of all your local public channels, figure that into your deal. You should also work to expand ECMC's capacity to serve as a non-commercial, democratically-run organization that works in multi-platforms as an outlet for community expression, and it's such a training center. You've trained so many people there, that's another very important thing. We need citizen journalists now. We can't trust the corporate media, and it's failing and it's disappearing. So we need places that train citizens to work with professionals on staff so that we can get the journalism back that we need, or that we maybe never had to begin with. And we also, I would also really like to see Evanston pass a resolution that has two parts. I would like you to pass a resolution in support of Illinois Attorney General Lisa Madigan's investigation, asking for that investigation to be made public. It's been over a year now.
We do need you to wrap up.
That involves the AT&amp;T problem with its treatment of public access. The other part of that resolution, I believe, should support HR 3745, which is called the Community Access Preservation Act, sponsored by Tammy Baldwin. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Bohush. I'm at 6656 New Guard, that's Chicago, for those of you in the know who have a map. I'm a teacher at Columbia College. I'm a TV producer for places like Channel 11, Channel 26, and I was the co-host of a TV show on the Evanston channel. It was called ECTV Zine. We made it right here, and we won two national awards. I've been a teacher since the mid-'90s, which was the very beginning of the video revolution, and I always like to say that someday, your favorite TV show would be made by you or somebody that you know. Now, the personal video revolution is finally here. Took a little longer than we thought. It's not in 10 years, it's not in five, it's right now. Video's more important, more personal than ever, because more people can do it than ever. Think of how many devices are in your pocket right now that play video, your iPod, your music player, your laptop. People are watching, regular people are watching videos that regular people made. How many hundreds of millions are watching YouTube? They're seeing news, they're seeing entertainment made by their friends and by their neighbors. When we did our Zine show back a few years ago, we had a goal to create a news magazine that looked every bit as good as regular television, and we did it without losing that personal touch. And like I said, we're very proud of the awards that we won, and the ECMC helped make that possible by inviting TV professionals to come in and give free seminars anybody could go see. They also gave us training on new equipment and new techniques. Again, the entire public was invited to that, and that's how we earned those awards, not to keep bragging about it. Now, when you're a teacher, you read things like the Horizon Report, which is a nationally-recognized standard for learning about where media and education are coming together. So let me read a quick paragraph to you from that. "There's a skills gap between understanding how to use tools for media creation and how to create meaningful content. Although new tools make it increasingly easy to produce multimedia works, students lack essential skills in composition, storytelling, and design. In addition, faculty need to adapt to the pace of change and to teach the skills that will be needed." What they're saying is that all the equipment in the world is not going to tell a good story. They're also saying that it's important to have the people of the ECMC to bridge the skills gap. You're not going to learn about how to operate equipment, you're going to learn how to tell your story. Basically, and I'm mixing a metaphor, the ECMC lets you put your best voice forward. We all have these, or a lot of us do, these little HD cameras, and they're cheap, and they're great, and they're fun, but you hit the limits of this really fast. Okay, this is great for shooting across the kitchen table, but what if you want to have two people in a conversation? What if you want to have a council meeting like this, or a kids' TV recital? You need a studio, you need the cameras that are all in Studio A at the ECMC right now. It's not a matter of building toward this video revolution. It's happened, and the ECMC is there, ready for it. There are more notes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Steve Bartelbaum, Amy Horton, Anthony Van Zyle, and Jane Woolley. Steve?
He's coming. He's in the back.
Oh.
It's a long one. Sorry to keep you waiting, I was just watching television. It's a thing that I like to do. I tend to work in it, and it just kind of happens. First of all, I would like to make a slight presentation from some of our supporters. Ladies, if you would. I understand it's tough to get up early in the morning to do a meeting, so instead of pay-to-play, we're doing eat-to-play today. We'd like you to have a little breakfast treat and a DVD of the ECMC, so you know more about us and our understanding what it is that we represent. Ladies, please. Yeah, this is better than the gift bag, I promise.
Steve, we do want to get through so we can hear everybody who's here today.
All right. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, I hope you don't mind if I take a moment to thank those who are here in support of ECMC. For those of you who are here on behalf of the Media Center, feel stand-up right now. I want to make it clear that you're looking at producers of children's programming, religious programming, ethnic programming. You're looking at local organizations, you're looking at a veteran and a child, you're looking at those who support other organizations but feel compelled to stand up for local non-commercial media. You're looking at the fabric of the community, you're looking at friends and family, you are looking in the mirror.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming. Ironically, the people who are here are risking their property taxes going up, right? Because realistically, if there are no more cuts than to restore funding, the monies would come out of their pockets. That must mean these people really care. And again, I thank you. Councilman, I'm asking you to care. My board members have eloquently stated the history of our organization and the logical funding that was set up from the cable franchise fee. I do think you owe the community answers to where the franchise fee is being allocated. Is it fair that cable subscribers have to pay for non-cable-related services that non-subscribers don't have to pay for? Look, I'm not here to preach to you. I understand the financial difficulties. God knows, as a nonprofit, I very well understand financial difficulties. But first off, I want to make sure that you understand that I'm not opposed to looking for ways for us to save money, to raise money, to make the center more viable as its own institution. Certainly, that's a goal. And you've heard why sometimes it's been very difficult, the way we've been structured. If there are options, let's put the options on the table. That's what I ask. At this point, I've heard many folks who weren't really clear on our funding, our lease, the cable franchise. And really, there's no reason for that. I'm available, and I want to find a way to make this work. So please, if we can have that dialogue, I think we can move somewhere in the direction of keeping the Media Center open. Let me ask you to do something. First off, I want you to think about the $200,000 that's being held in contingency for next year. Is that a luxury worth having when it means potentially closing our center for that same amount of money? Also, I ask you to look at line item 62665 in the city budget. That's 62665. On television, we always repeat numbers until folks can get a pen and paper and write it down.
Steve, you're already at three minutes, so try to speed it up.
I usually do half-hour shows.
I know. I know.
Sorry, guys, we'll move this very quickly. This is where the funding of ECMC was allocated last year. There's over $300,000 being designated under other agencies for this upcoming year. If we're no longer that agency, who is? Finally, I hope you enjoy our peace offering of cookies and video. Even more substantially, I'll make a concession right now myself. I grew up in this town, and I've worked too hard to see this center shut down. I'll personally take a 5% salary cut next year, just like our city manager. If the city's sincere in finding a way to keep us open, that's a starting point. What can we do?
Good morning. My name is Amy Horton, and I reside at 913 Michigan. I am the Library Media Specialist at Lincoln Elementary School located at 910 Forest in the 3rd Ward. And I am here today on behalf of many of my students, faculty, and staff at Lincoln in support of saving the branch libraries. This week, as I was talking to my classes about this proposal of closing the library and explaining to them why this is coming about, I just want to give you a picture of what I saw. I saw disappointment, sadness, frustration, and then it turned around to action. A group of my 4th grade students got together this week, and they went to all of the classes and had students sign petitions to save both branch libraries, in particular, the South Branch. And then many of my students also wrote letters from kindergarten to 5th grade of what the library means to them. And time and time, as I read through these letters, and I will pass these on to Ms. Nguyen, both the letters and the petition this week, from time and time again, what came up is the proximity of the library, and how it's close to their home, and how they can walk there. And as an educator, what this proximity means is equity. Many of my students do not have computers at home, do not have print resources at home. And for them to be able to walk to their branch library, to be able to do their homework there, to be able to be able to check books out, or as many of them say, the terminology, rent books, to be able to take those books home with them, it is a wonderful resource for them, and as I said, it brings that equity. Also, I am the mother of a three-year-old. Before I worked at Lincoln, I visited the branch as bringing my son to book babies, to the reading programs. Wonderful resource to be able to, that's part of our daily routine. I know one of the things that's coming up is bringing people to Evanston, making Evanston a destination, which I totally agree with, having people come here, spend money here. But if you live near these branch libraries, these branch libraries are a destination weekly. And this is what came out from many of my students. In these letters, as I pass them along to you, you will see them say, "I have been going to this library since I've been one year old." And so, in support, that's why I am here today, also to say that, as a librarian, I work extensively with the staff.
I do need you to wrap it up.
Thank you. I work extensively with the staff. This year, all of my 1st and 3rd graders, we took walking field trips this year to the branch library to work collaboratively on research projects, and also, this is creating a healthy habit for our students, that as we teach them how to go to the library, this is something they will take into adulthood and share with their families. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, Alderman. My name is Anthony Van Zyle. I live at 707 Michigan. I'm a 20-year resident of the city of Evanston. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Evanston Community Media Center, on behalf of the branch libraries, and in support of the city. The libraries are experiencing, the branch libraries are experiencing an upturn in usage. And in these downtimes, I find it unusual that the city, which is committed to providing services to its residents, would consider cutting those very services that are needed more now than ever. I have five children. All of them have used the libraries, the main branch and the branch libraries. They use these as a resource because of what it provides, not only in terms of the books, the socialization that they get with their friends, but also because they understand the value of a library in the brain trust of a city's development. I strongly suggest that the city looks not at cuts in tough budget times, but at alternative revenue sources. Around the country, libraries are using different methods to generate revenue. Cities such as Frankfurt, Indiana, Oak Park, Illinois, Burlington, Iowa, Portland, Oregon, Lexington, Kentucky, Bozeman, Montana, Salt Lake City, Utah, and many, many more have faced the same problems, the same concerns. And rather than cutting every time a budget crisis arises, they've used innovative methods to increase revenue. A very simple one? Thank you. A very simple one is the inclusion of coffee shops within libraries. How many people in the audience today have gone to Barnes &amp; Noble or Borders and used the coffee shop, generated revenue for a commercial institution? And yet, a branch library that is better equipped in many cases, or a main library in many cases than these bookstores, cannot follow the same basic tenants of understanding that we have to break out of a tax-and-cut cycle and into alternative revenue systems. I'm also speaking on behalf of the Evanston Community Media Center. In the past few years, terms have entered our lexicon such as hyper-local journalism, citizen journalist, and of course, YouTube. In an era when one person can reach 100 million individuals, media has become paramount. And yet, in this creation of media, one of the things missing is access to means of production. The Evanston Community Media Center focuses on that, not only providing access, but providing education, means of production, and ability for individuals. In the creation of these media elements that are now being distributed not only on cable but on the Internet systems, we are attracting hundreds, thousands, and even millions of viewers. Because Evanston Community Media Center is specifically focused on Evanston, all those viewers, all those watchers of this new media are paying attention to the city of Evanston. In an alternative revenue system, in an alternative marketing system, Evanston must become a much more important element in what is being sent out to the world. The maintenance of-
We need you to wrap up. Thank you.
Well, the maintenance of a system such as the Evanston Community Media System will allow Evanston residents to present themselves and their community to the world. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jane Woolley, and I live at 425 Keene in Evanston. I'm here, first of all, I support everything that people have talked about, about the library. I just want to add a short thing as a user. I mean, I've been a user of the library, a pretty heavily user, especially of the South Branch Library, for 30-some-odd years. And it's always been wonderful. But I've been in there, because of circumstances of my life, I've been in there a lot in the last two or three months, and it's palpably different. It's palpable, you can just feel the vibrancy in that library now. It's used always by a wide variety of uses. I'm amazed at how many times there are toddlers in there being read to. I mean, in and out. Almost every time I go in, and it's just, I don't know how they can do it. There are people on the computers, always. There are people reading papers, there are people, it's just constantly in use. It's really, they say 30% more usage, but it really feels like a lot more than that as a user just going in there. So I just wanted to say that I agree with everything that's been said, and I do hope we can find a way to keep the libraries.
Thank you very much. Next, Elizabeth Gordon, Kevin O'Connor, Joan Dukayet, Heather Joseph, and Mike Vasilla. Yes, Alderman Rainey, I think I'm going to ask you to take over now. And I'd like to say again, thank you all for coming. It is very heartening to see this turnout.
Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Gordon. I reside at 7756 West North Shore Avenue, that is in Chicago. I work and love the community of Evanston. I am Director of Evanston Skokie Valley Senior Services, which is the Evanston Office of North Shore Senior Center. I am speaking on behalf of all those we serve who cannot be here with you today because of their various vulnerabilities. Most of our work is helping poor seniors and their families, including 80-plus grandchildren who are in our grandparents-raising-grandchildren program, and who live in the Evanston community. That work is helping them meet their most basic needs of food, heat, housing, medications, and so forth. If ever there was a need and a time for us to have your support, that time is definitely now. This plea is not for our agencies, it is for the services we provide to our citizens. It is to help our citizens live better and stay in place in their communities. Our last seniors we served last evening, my intake coordinator came in around 5:00. It was a couple who had walked in, they had no heat, they had an ICOR disconnect notice, but they already had their heat cut off, no money to buy food, and no money to buy critical medications. We thank you for the past support you've given to support these clients and others, over 2,000 in fact, and we definitely look forward to the funding, to the Evanston Mental Health Board request that will be key to our continuation of the community work that we do on behalf of our seniors and their families. We thank you very much.
My name is Kevin O'Connor, 12-
My name is Kevin O'Connor, 1227 and 1/2 Isabella. First, thanks to our city manager and staff for the Citizens Budget Workshops. I'm in favor of keeping both branch libraries open. I would ask the council to ask or beg Northwestern University to have the Kellogg School of Business study, to have the Kellogg School of Business study the management, budget, and operations of the city of Evanston. A non-political, transparent, third-party study would get to the roots of our problems. Thirdly, the political impacts of tough fiscal choices are likely to hinder the council's ability to address our deficits. Therefore, in the future, I would ask that council members refrain from the conflict of interest inherent in taking money and campaign support from the firefighters' union. Finally, since, finally, since past is prologue, I would ask the members of this council to remember that being green is about the conservation of scarce resources, in this case, our taxpayers' dollars. The failure of the previous councils to manage our tax dollars conservatively has led to this foreseeable budget crisis, i.e., kicking the can down the road on pensions, sales tax rebates, developer welfare, privatizing profit, and socializing risk is an ongoing outrage. Please stop it. Thank you.
Joan?
Hello, my name is Joan Ducayet. I live at 2226 Noys Street. I'm here today to support the Evanston Community Television and as my role as President of the Evanston Fourth of July Association. It was mentioned here by some of the previous speakers that nonprofits in Evanston benefit from the production services of Evanston Television. We are one of those organizations, and I think in one of the most important ways in communicating the history of this city with many of its new residents. The Fourth of July celebration in Evanston is our largest civic celebration, and it brings together parts of all of Evanston to celebrate our many organizations. And I want to let you know a little bit about what Steve Bartaball and his production team do to communicate that, to not only to new residents, but it provides a production that we post on our internet site that people can see throughout the year. When you enter the parade, when you finish your application, either online or on paper, there's a link provided to Steve's email where you can provide in 500 words a history or the mission statement of your organization. So as your group marches down Central Street, Steve is able to explain either the history or what the direction that that organization is taking, whether it be our private preschools, Beehive Organization, the Flying Fish, or the Actors Gymnasium. It is a forum for our nonprofits and citizens to have a chance to have their say. One of the things that I would like to point out is that last year was one of those most important times. Along with many influential citizens, including Second Alderman Jean Baptiste, the Fourth of July Association was proud to put on a tribute to Beau Price and what he had done for our city, not only our veterans, but our young people. Steve took interest in this, and if you have a chance to go to our website and see the parade in the production this year, you see a wonderful description of what Beau did for our city, what he did for the young people, and how that translates into service to our city today.
Your time is up.
So I would just urge that as the council remember, as they're considering cutting this expenditure, that in retelling the history of our city, we are in creating our future. I believe that productions such as EMC-
Could I ask you to wind it up, please?
Yes. That in, that an opportunity to tell our history as Evanston is worth preserving. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Heather Joseph?
Hi, I'm Heather Joseph. I'm here on behalf of Metropolitan Family Services in Evanston, and just want to comment on, well, thank you for your continued support of the Evanston Mental Health Board funding. And just wanted to comment on what a great gift it's been to the community for families of Evanston to be able to receive these services. The programs that we provide are designed to prevent child abuse and neglect. And the families that we work with are incredibly resilient. They've come from, through trauma and abuse, and utilize these services and the strength within themselves to really be able to provide better future for their children and enhance relationship between parent and child. And we know that strong families are going to contribute to a stronger community. And so we ask your continued support with Evanston Mental Health Board funding. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike Vasilko?
I'm Mike Vasilko, 2728 Reese Avenue in Evanston. I continue to advocate that the council consider a lakefront district for the fine arts and a small convention center. I have circulated a Tribune article outlining tax revenues gained by such facilities in neighboring communities, although the focus of the article is related to the slight reduced revenue due to the recession. What is eye-opening is the tens of millions of dollars that these facilities can generate annually in tax revenue for their communities. Woodfield in 2008 raised $42 million in tax revenue for their convention center. DuPage Convention raised $84 million. Chicago Southland raised $71 million. Rosemont came in last at only $18 million. $18 million we'd be happy to have. To those who have criticized the idea, I ask that they present an equally viable alternative to address long-term budget concerns. To date, I have heard no other long-term solutions. To those who feel the lakefront is their own personal amenity, who don't want the view from their veranda changed, I say those people should pay a much larger burden of the property tax levy. Let me be clear, a city-owned and managed fine arts convention center district is a viable tax revenue-producing concept. Raising property taxes on overly burdened residents is not acceptable. The tax revenue generated by facilities like this could pay for all of these other budget cuts we're discussing today. Instead of, I'm sorry, instead of, we could keep and build new libraries in schools, we could pay for our pension fund obligations, and we could hire, not fire, city staff. Thank you.
Kevin Johnson? Is Kevin Johnson here?
Yes.
Okay, Kevin. I'm going to read a few more names, and if you'll line up, that would be helpful. Patricia Sims, Abraham Santiago, Maria Mahoney, and Larry Lundie.
Hello.
Well, good morning. My name is Kevin Johnson. I'm president of Ask Me Local 1891. Our local represents over 300 City of Evanston employees. Our union members, 27 of them, will experience the bulk of the layoffs being recommended by this proposed budget. It is hard to see anyone lose their job, especially since it's going to be hard to find another one. But it's not just the layoffs that we are concerned about, it's the quality of life, it's the quality of services in the city of Evanston. Let's imagine what could happen as a result of cutting of city services. Reductions in customer service by eliminating the various positions in parks and recreation will be very noticeable to Evanston residents. Our citizens really enjoy our parks and community centers. Shrinking these services would mean dirty bathrooms, less service to our seniors, and disappointment to residents. It would have a negative effect on the city's image. The Fleet Service Crew repairs all vehicles, including snowplows, fire trucks, police cars, and street repair vehicles. Fewer mechanics means a longer turnaround time, especially since vehicles that a majority has outlived their life cycles will take longer to repair. This will affect the number of police cars and fire trucks on the streets, reduce the time for potholes to get fixed, and snow plowing will take longer, as a few examples. I don't think, I believe the residents here have spoke. We have 16 members in the library that are being affected by not just the closing of the branch libraries, but also by the downsizing of technical services. I don't believe I have to speak. I believe the residents have spoken enough in regards to the library. The union believes the quality of service would decline with outsourcing of refuse collection. Our sanitation crew is experienced, has a relationship with this community, and is known for its reliability. However, yes, we understand the reason for the change, and we are flexible and able to return to pick up garbage at a moment's notice. But once the council decides to privatize refuse, it will be difficult to return to in-house pickup if residents are not satisfied, especially after positions and trucks have been eliminated. And as a reminder, Gary, Indiana, experienced a crisis after laying off their entire garbage crew and awarding a $5 million contract to Allied Waste. The private firms' fees went up considerably, and there was a public protest, leaving trash in the streets for two weeks. This reason, as well as others, is why we caution this move. It was just a couple of years ago that the health clinic was closed and jobs-
I'm sorry, but you've, I lost track of you, and you've gone way over. You have to end with the next sentence, okay? Sorry.
Okay. Well, I will say this much. We know that it is true, and the quality of life of the services that we provide, the citizens will, will lose. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. All right. Patricia Sims, if I could just let you all know that there are 48 people signed up to speak. None of you, unless you've had a personal conversation with an Alderman, knows how Aldermen feel about any of these proposed cuts. So the more opportunity the council has to discuss and debate these cuts, the better it will be for everyone. So if we could just move forward as quickly as possible, that would just be fabulous.
My name is Patricia Sims. I live at, oh my God, you can't imagine how intimidated I am by this process.
Oh, don't be, please.
Okay. I live at 104W South Boulevard.
There you go.
And Ms. Nguyen is my Alderman. I'd like to talk, I represent ECMC, and I'd like to talk to you about unintended consequences of your move. I'd just like to reiterate something that all of you have heard, but maybe have not quite digested. ECMC is not supported by tax dollars. ECMC gets its money from the Comcast registration fees that you pay. And what the council is proposing is that they take those because of the budget deficit. Now, this is what I'd like you to consider. Nobody knows what goes on with television. NBC doesn't even know what goes on, as you all have noticed with the Jay Leno debacle. You have noticed the Jay Leno debacle. But here's, here's the possible thing that could happen. First of all, ECMC has been around for more than 20 years. That's 20 years of producers, talent, employees, and so forth. And I have talked to more than one person at ECMC who only subscribes to cable because they want to watch their own show. That's their relatives and their friends as well. 20 years' worth of those people could cancel Comcast because their shows are no longer on. That means you wouldn't get the money, neither would we, and ECMC would be gone. I hope I'm wrong. And I'm certainly not suggesting a boycott. I'm saying this is a possible unexpected circumstance. Thank you.
Is Abraham Santiago here? No? All right. Maria Mahoney? Maria?
Hi, I'm Marsha Mahoney.
Is Larry Lundie here? Mary Alice Ball? Come up. Okay. Go ahead. I'm very sorry, very sorry.
That's okay. I'm Marsha Mahoney. I live at 1236 Forest in Evanston. I'm also employed at the South Branch of the library and a member of ASME, so clearly I come to this with some bias. And that bias is in favor of keeping the branch libraries open. But I'm speaking to you not as a staff person who's going to lose their job, but as a citizen of Evanston. I was a partner for, in a law firm for 20 years downtown, and I was a member of the administration at Northwestern. I don't need to work at the South Branch of the library, but I'm doing it because I believe the branch libraries are very important to our community. And as a citizen, I think Evanston needs a presence in West Evanston. What we've seen at the South Branch in this economic climate is an increase in the use of our computers by people who are looking for jobs. Each day, I help someone sign up for a Yahoo account and then show them how to use a mouse so they can go online and apply for jobs. We need that type of presence, not just in the North and South, but also in the West. And I feel that we currently are at a time, as Evanstonians, where we can make some choices to do things differently, and to do them better, and to reach everyone. And I will offer any time that I have personally beyond my work hours to help make that happen. I'm a good researcher, I'm a good writer, I will help anyone, including the council, find a way to make Evanston better. We're diverse, we're great. I came to Northwestern in 1977, and I've chosen to stay, and I've chosen to stay for a reason. And it's because Evanston represents, it represents what the world could be if people work together. And I really hope that we choose this opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Larry Lundie.
Go right ahead, Larry. Myron Martin, Gladys Brier, Janod Rizki, and we'll work on the next one later.
I want to thank everybody for the time to speak today. My name is Larry Lundie. I live at 933 Ashland in Evanston, very proud of it, in the fourth ward. I also want to thank Mayor Tisdale for her comments supporting the library. And one of the first things I want to do is clarify something that I think is a misstatement, and that is, the city cannot restructure the taxing district and/or library district so that the library can fund itself separately. I think that's something that we need to explore, and we need to explore very seriously because other cities have done this, San Francisco and in Brooklyn, where there's private funding and public funding mixed together. And I want, I would like to have, us have a year at least to be able to do that and keep the library branches open, which are serving communities where kids can walk to that the main branch cannot serve. And also, I've been to both branches. The librarians there could never be more helpful, and I, and I just, it's so much fun to see kids there and parents with strollers, and retired people, and people who just have no place to get this information but in the library. And one thing I like to think of the library is, it's not just a place where there's a harvest, but it's a place where we plant seeds. And I think it's important that the children who have the opportunity, and anyone who has an opportunity to be someplace where books are gathered, is lucky, and they should be able to have that opportunity. I was at, I was at a meeting with over a dozen people last night, and it was so heartening because when I got there, there were about two or three, and I went, oh, oh, well. And then all of a sudden, everybody showed up, and it was very heartening. I wanted to ask those who are still here who have not, who are here to support the libraries to please stand. Thank you very much. And in closing, I wanted to read this.
Larry, could you wind it up?
Yes, I will.
Your time is up.
There is an Illinois statute that would allow for the transfer of authority over the libraries from the city council to a duly-elected board of trustees who would have authority to collect funds to support the libraries. It's 75 ILCS 16 dash-
Larry, you have to wind it up.
10 dash 5 if you want to look at it. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Mary Alice Ball. I live at 2545 Bennett. I'm chairman of the American Library Association's Telecommunications Subcommittee. My dissertation examined public funding supporting equitable access to the internet, specifically looking at funding a legislation around telecommunications infrastructure. I am asking you today to give a one-year reprieve to the closing of the branches. And I'm going to fold ECMC into this because certainly, media is an important part of libraries today and in the future. Libraries aren't just a cultural institution, we consider them community anchor institutions now because they are so critical to internet access. If you think of the efficiencies that you've gotten through e-government, you know, that's all tied in to the assumption that people will have access to the internet. Many people in our community don't. I'm unemployed, third time in 10 years. I, I will, I'm a single mom, but internet access is one of the last things I'll give up. Why? Because I have it, have to use it for applications, for jobs. Because I have it, have to use it for applications, for jobs. I file my unemployment on the Internet. How many people have to go to the library because they don't have access at home? The, there's an opportunity, and I distributed a proposal to you. I think we can go out for federal funding from Department of Commerce, National Telecommunications Infrastructure Administration, has Broadband Technology Opportunities Program. We can do a community-wide approach. It cannot just be libraries. It has to incorporate other agencies. We can go forward and say we want to have a public safety alert system that reaches all corners of the community. But yes, public computing centers are a big part of it. At the branches, and maybe at a new branch, I mean, we need a branch on the West Side. If that branch is where we have media systems, then all the more powerful. We can upgrade infrastructure in the city. Even if you go to the library now-
Your time is up, Mary Alice.
-infrastructure access is lousy. We can do training programs-
Mary Alice, your time is up.
-for small business owners. Thanks, I'm ignoring you, but just for a moment longer.
I know, but I, I would appreciate the respect that you not ignore so that we can get on and other people can speak.
And we can do this through a creative, innovative approach. The notice of funds availability is due out January 15. We expect a one-month turnaround. Decisions made within four to six months. Thank you.
Myron Martin, and Gladys Brier, Janod, and I have a, somebody here from CNE whose name is Marcia? I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Good morning. My name is Myron Martin. I'm at 6905 North Kilborn in Lincolnwood. I've been working at Evanston Community Media Center for some five, six years now. I flew in Thursday because I wanted to at least sit in the audience here, because ECMC is important to you. It has proven over the years to be the cornerstone of communications in any operation, be it military, the gentleman here, be it corporate, be it governmental. The effectiveness resides in communications, and that means ECMC. This community here that is represented in this forum is brought together because of communications. Each and every one of you sitting on this panel have a responsibility to maintain the viability of this community. Otherwise, you wouldn't be here. And you're taking that responsibility very seriously. What you must maintain is the ability for people outside of this room, this is being telecast, right? Right? There are thousands of people outside of this room that are interested in government. Each and every program caused presented here, be it fire, be it library, is important. It's part of the viability of this community. But if the residents of the community are not aware, and are not aware of the wonderful cultural things, the governmental action taken here, and the responsibilities that you take on your shoulders, it's going to fall apart. I tell you that without reservation. Maintain communications that maintains the viability of your community.
Mr. Martin, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Brier, then Janod, and Marcia?
Good morning. My name is Gladys Brier. I live at 550 Sheridan Square. I'm here to speak in favor of maintaining the branch libraries. In a community the size of Evanston, it's some kind of an illusion that you could build one place, central location, to meet all the library needs of a community this large. It cannot be successfully centralized. Lots and lots of things will fall apart, as we've already indicated, the proximity, the ability to walk from the schoolchildren who are close to both of the existing branch libraries. If there were, if you pursue this proposal, the 17% of the current library usage which takes place in the branches would be way reduced. I mean, I can't predict, but it would go down, not up. The, the proximity of children to the schools has been mentioned, but also the fact that, for example, in South Branch, there are no public parking garages within blocks and blocks of the library. It is really a walk-to-library for the community. Then there's the question of neighborhood equity, which hasn't come up. We've talked about, other speakers have mentioned the proposal to build even a West Side branch, which I believe is a very good idea. But that is no reason, the absence of a West Side branch is no reason to close the other two branches. And that is because that, what I'm trying, what I'm saying is that, what is, we have, for example, many recreational activities and public community venues. Those would, you would never consider taking those out of local communities and putting them all into some downtown venue. That's the idea of the Downtown Public Library would be an analogy to that. That wouldn't be done because you know that it would lower, people wouldn't want to go there to play games and to do their work there. They want to have these activities in the community, and I urge you to keep the branch libraries and to enlarge the system so that there is a West Side branch. Thank you.
I think today, I, I hope at the end of this, I don't hear what I consider the usual from council members, and that's plain to the audience here with politics. The council, last year when some of you ran for office, and, and those of you who are sitting here, knew we had structural problems on the budget. You did not raise taxes, you did not do anything, didn't lay anybody off. You drained down the cash reserves of the city. The, the reserves, while not critical now, will be critical if you drain the reserves down, and you won't make payroll. So, you won't pay the 800 employees who are left here. And really, at the end of the year, this year's budget with $4 million in the hole, you're at $9.5 million next year, and that translates to a 30% property tax increase to the citizens if you don't do something. And next year, the economy isn't going to improve that much. I mean, even though they're telling you that, it's very likely you'll be doing something similar next year here. So, I think that needs to be really understood. And yes, I, I mean, I support the branch libraries. People go to the Central Street Neighbor's site and see what I said there. But there's a, there's a lot more to be discussed, and I'll be discussing at other meetings when there's not so many people here. Of all the things that are really not being done right, things that I don't think are in the citizens' interest, and there's some other things really, like, consider lack of some fiscal responsibility here. So, yes, you're going to have to make some big cuts, so, and you all know that. So, I hope I don't hear five minutes out each one of you at the end of this, of politics, and we get on with what we have to do. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Marcia Fincher. I'm at 1400 Ashland here in Evanston. I'm here on behalf of Child Care Network of Evanston. I'm a board member for about four years or more, and I am also a family home childcare provider. I want to talk a little bit about the importance of retaining programs, family-related, for the young parents of Evanston. I'm also going to talk a little bit about mistakes of the past. We fail to remember. We do not like to remember because maybe we think it would go away. But I'm here to say, not without fixing or attempting to fix it. A lot of our young African-American men have been taught how to breed, and that was taught by others that used this as a means to enrich their lifestyle. Well, now, you have your lifestyle, but you also have your problem. I believe today you can begin a new era to bring closure to the past mistakes by supporting programs which strengthen families, teach young men how to be more than breeders, be fathers, and take care of their families. Teach mothers how to be mothers to their children, and raise productive citizens. Please consider this by not cutting program that supports families. Thank you.
We have Cass Wolf, Ted Loda, and Susan Rule, and after that, Scott Sanders, Socorro Clark, and Terri Beam.
Good morning. I'm Cass Wolf. I live at 325 Dewey. I'm the executive director of Infant Welfare Society at 2200 Main, and at, on Dewey as well, in the Family Focus Building. I'm here in support of human services. When we look at the budget, proposed budget cuts, it looks at community agencies. And I want to remind all of us that this isn't about the agencies. Agencies like the one that I run and my colleagues run are not here for gaining, lining their pockets, but we are here for the voiceless. The population I serve is largely single mothers who are home, I'm sure, right now with their young children, unable to come and be at a presentation like this. So, we are serving a number of vulnerable, very vulnerable families in the Evanston community who need services. Cutting services, of course, makes that harder to serve that number of children. We have in our midst here in Illinois, in the Chicago area, a Nobel Prize-winning economist, James Heckman, who has, through research, documented, proven that for every dollar we spend on early childhood services, that we've saved somewhere between $7 and $14 in savings for around school dropout, remediation, juvenile justice system, incarceration, all of those kinds of services. So, starting with our youngest children saves the most money over time. So, I would like to close by talking about one of the children in our care, a three-month-old, I'll call, I'll call Anne, who in our care, we noticed was not having the right muscle control that a three-month-old should. We were able to do some screening, which we do for every child. Through that, we realized that Anne had some significant developmental issues going on. At three months, we were able to talk to the mom, and then through that, the teen mother agreed services needed to happen. This child is now getting services at our center and is on her way to be ready to kindergarten because she is getting what she needs. Whereas if she were home alone, that would not happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Ted Eldota. I'm, live at 1314 Washington. I had the proud privilege of representing the employees of the city of Evanston for more than 20 years, and I'm proud to stand for them today. Just as the citizens of Evanston, whenever asked their opinion of the services rendered, always voted for the employees. To you who are looking for sources of revenue, House Bill 174 is the vehicle. It would bring to the city, in the first year, 2010, an estimated $1.5 million. The year 2011, it would bring $3 million. How would it be raised? By raising an antiquated income tax rate, which is the lowest of income tax rates, states with income tax rates at 3%, it's the lowest. It would bring at the 5%, which would make it very comparable to other states in this, in this United States. Also, you should know, among other things that House Bill 174 would do, was double the property tax credit homeowners now claim, from the current 5% to 10%. It would increase the current $2,000 personal exemption for income taxes in Illinois to $3,000. It would triple the amount for the poorest of the earned income tax credit from 5 to 15%. Finally, the way to do this is to call your senator, our senator, Senator Jeff Schoenberg, and tell him to stand in support of House Bill 174. And finally, Brian, I want to thank you and the firefighters.
Ted, your time is up.
You mentioned, I'll be very quick, Anne. I meant, I suffered cardiac arrest in 2000, in the year 2008 in November. You saved my life, my family and friends, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm Susan Rule. I live in Chicago, but I'm the director of a program in Evanston, and I wish there were more early childhood people to speak on behalf of the budget. Cass did. I'm going to take it from a more practical standpoint, not statistically. Our program, the children, again, we need to focus on the children, benefit from services through Child Care Network of Evanston. One of the things that my families can benefit from is a scholarship program, and this is especially important for fam, for majority of single moms who are on Title 20 funding through the state. And the sad thing is, once they've been in the working world for a while, and they increase their salary, which is still way, way below what most of us would be able to live on, they income out of that system, and they, they're forced to go from maybe a co-pay of $50 or $60 a week for childcare to full fee, which is over $200 to $250, which is very unrealistic, because a lot of two-parent working families have a hard time paying full fee. So, what Evanston, the Child Care Network does is they provide funding for those families that are leaving the Title 20 program and help with the additional fees through scholarships so that they can continue. So, I would advocate that that funding is not cut, especially since it's forcing women to decide between, do you really go for a better job and more education to better what you can provide for your family, if it really then loses you services that have benefited your child? The other piece we receive, the children, is funding for special services, which are provided on-site. I'm out of time. Don't cut our services. Thank you.
Scott Sanders, Socorro Clark, and Terri Beam. Anybody with those names here?
I am not Socorro Clark, but I'm here to speak on her behalf.
Oh, great. Okay, Marcia.
And Socorro is a single mom. She-
Could you give us your name?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm Martha Aronson from Child Care Network of Evanston. I live at 1023 Simpson Street. I'm speaking on behalf of Socorro Clark, who is one of our employees. She is a parent advocate. She is also a single parent, and she said she would try to be here if she could find care for her child. So, I'm going to speak on her behalf. I had to ask her if she would talk about one of our clients who has received services across the board from the community, human services as well as services through a scholarship. So, I'd like to just read her story. She wrote this stor, this little testimony, this mother did. "It's been a joy to be a part of Child Care Network of Evanston since the beginning. Before I had my baby, I did not know what to do or expect. Being a single parent placed me in a difficult situation. I did not know where my baby would go when I returned to work. A friend of mine told me about CNE, and she took me there, and they helped me by finding a good childcare for my son. Any questions I had were answered, and they explained the process step to step. From the beginning, my child felt comfortable attending Baby Toddler Nursery of the Infant Welfare Society. The support my child and I received improved my self-confidence. The teachers and my family advocate are always willing to support me. What I like most about the program is that I have one relationship with my family advocate. She's someone I can talk to, she listens to me with respect, I do not feel judged or shy. Since I became part of the program, I know I have someone I can trust, and I do not feel alone anymore. When my son needed to have speech therapy, my family advocate and the education person took, were there to answer all my questions. When my son turned two years old and it was time to start looking for a preschool, my family advocate and the child, and my child's teachers helped me to start looking at possible places. We attend monthly meetings. This gives me a chance to meet other parents." Okay. I will sum this up by saying that this mother has been involved in one of our policy council programs. She has taken some leadership in the community. She has, she has in come, out, she was promoted, she cannot be supported by state subsidy anymore, and now- And now she's hoping that these services will not be cut.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you Teri?
My name is Teri Beam. I live at 3308 Grant Street. I've lived in Evanston for about 27 years, and I'm a board member. I'm proud to be a board member of Child Care Network Evanston, which Marsha is, Martha is the director. And Marsha Fincher, who spoke earlier, is another board member. And I've worked for over 35 years in the field of early intervention, prevention, family support, and childcare. I'm, I'll be very brief. I just, again, want to reiterate what some of the previous speakers have said about the importance of not cutting the $200,000, which is proposed from the Mental Health, Human Services Budget in Evanston. As others have said, the people who are going to be most affected by even what may seem like a relatively small cut are the people who are not here today, who, whose voices are not heard. They're already underserved. All the nonprofit agencies and programs have already been affected by state budget cuts and donations being down because of the economic situation we're all in. And these are families who live in poverty, single parents, victims of abuse, mentally ill, the homeless. I know this council has very hard choices to make, but please consider what others have said. These kinds of cuts will significantly affect early intervention programs for young children and families at risk. And as Cass said, research has shown that investing in children and families now in the early stage saves communities in, in later stages of life. So thank you very much for your help.
That, that concludes our speaker sign-ups. And I think I'm going to ask the, would you like a five-minute break? The, the council members are desperate for a five-minute break, and so we're going to do that. Please, let, do let's be back in five minutes.
... 2011 budget. We have a staff presentation this morning to walk you through the proposed budget document between myself, Mr. Lyons, and the department directors. I want to start the discussion this morning, talking about the process, the problems that we're facing, and the solutions that I have proposed to the city council to address these matters. Then Mr. Lyons and the department directors will provide an overview of the general fund budget. We're asking the council this morning to really focus on the general fund. And at future meetings, we'll talk about the remaining of the operating funds and the capital budget. And then the remaining of the time this morning would be for questions and discussion. As you well know, the budget process this year was a little bit more elongated than it has been in previous years. We went through a public budget workshop process. We reached out to our employees for budget suggestions. All of this was brought together with the proposed budget that you received on December 31st. The council now has until February the 28th for the adoption of a budget. I think that the process that we went through was a very positive one. I think that there were a lot of opportunities for resident and employee input. We used television. We used the internet, always, I think, to help make this process as open as possible. Really, three problems, I think, we face as a community as we look at this budget. First and foremost, the general fund has a expenditures that exceed revenues by $9.5 million. And to make it clear that the budget that you have received is a budget that is out of balance. In past years, the council has received a budget with the staff's recommendations already included. It's my feeling that is not an appropriate activity for the staff. So we have provided you a budget that is $9.5 million in arrears, but have a plan proposed to the city council for the balancing of that $9.5 million. The second challenge we have is the, the reduction of expenditures primarily to meet this $9.5 million gap. We are proposing no new general taxes for the city of Evanston in order to make up that gap. And then thirdly, how do you, with a $9.5 million budget deficit, looking at reducing services, reducing employees, still move Evanston forward despite the cuts? As you heard this morning from many of the speakers, the importance of continuing to move forward as a community, and I believe that the proposed budget that we have before you today, despite the cuts, helps move Evanston forward. So in order to talk more about the solutions, I want to focus on a couple of specific areas. First of all, I want to talk about ending the current fiscal year 0910, according to the plan that was outlined by the city council, approved by the city council in the fall, to focus on the city council's goals that were adopted this fall, to be informed by the suggestions from community and employees that we've had through the various processes in the fall. I have some specific budget goals, which I would like to share with the council. And then finally, we'll get into the details of the proposed changes to the draft budget in order to close the gap, as well as talk a little bit about the additional $1.5 million in reductions that I'm proposing in addition to the $9.5 million to balance the budget. First, where do we stand in the current year? You have at your tables this morning a detailed report on where we stand at the end of the third quarter. At the end of the third quarter, we are projecting a budget deficit of $1,730,000. If you recall from your budget workshop that you had at the Levy Center, I think it was back in October, we had proposed that it was going to be a $4 million deficit. $2 million we would manage through, and $2 million would be the ending deficit. We are meeting that $2 million mark of managing through, and we are looking at a deficit less than the $2 million we proposed in the fall. As the council had signed off at that point, that $2 million, or as we're projecting at this point, $1.7 million, would come from the ending on reserve fund balance. So we would be ending the year projected with a reserve fund balance of $12,595,000. So for point one, we are on track with the plan that the council approved for the ending of the current fiscal year. The city council has adopted several goals in the fall, and this budget works hard to address all of them. I want to speak about a couple of them because some of them are, are more from a policy perspective than they are from a resource perspective. Certainly affordable housing, which the council has a special meeting coming up next Wednesday evening on the 13th. Budget planning, capital improvement planning, those are things that are ongoing, really require, you know, specific resources. Affordable housing, I think we'll continue to talk about as the council further develops its priorities in that area. Lakefront development has been discussed by the council. The Robert Crown Center improvements, there are direction to move forward with a request for proposals, and you'll be seeing that probably in the next six weeks or so. But let me talk about the remaining council goals and how this budget addresses them. The Climate Action Plan, we continue to move forward and, again, trying to leverage non-tax resources. We have been very successful so far in our grants. We're continuing to work with Citizens for a Greener Evanston on additional volunteer efforts. So I think we're seeing a lot of very positive movement forward on the Climate Action Plan without a lot of additional resources, really no additional resources coming from the taxpayers of Evanston, looking outside of Evanston for grant funds, other funds, to move that forward. In the area of economic development, the council really has, while these are all generally equal, this was the number one issue in your initial deliberations, and we are making changes that are being funded outside of the general fund to add additional staff members to our economic development efforts. We are moving staff from other departments within the city to focus on economic development. And finally, we are changing the name of the Department of Community Development to the Department of Community and Economic Development to signal the focus on the importance on work in the area of economic development. The next council goal, efficiency and effectiveness of services. I think this is probably the one area that I think we can make major progress in, in fiscal year 2010, 2011, and that is working on how we deal with our residents, our customers. And I'm proposing in this budget, the shifting of responsibilities of one of our key staff members, Joe McCray, to the position of Chief Customer Officer. And it will be his responsibility to make sure that this organization deals with our residents in the most efficient and effective way possible in providing all municipal services. He will also be responsible with the ways that, how we communicate with our residents. And I would hope to bring before you a proposal during the coming fiscal year to create a 3-1-1 system here in the city of Evanston. Currently, the city of Chicago and the village of Schaumburg are the two communities in Illinois that have this, where it's one-stop shopping, one phone number for all non-emergency services, and Mr. McCray would be leading that effort. In the area of federal, state, regional government affairs agenda, the council adopted in the fall, for the first time in many years, a, a specific agenda to move forward, our issues both in Springfield and Washington, as well as with our regional partners throughout Illinois. I am proposing in the budget that we hire a intergovernmental relations coordinator, who a staff member, who would be specifically responsible for bringing in additional revenues and our coordination on the state and federal level. This would not be funded with general fund resources. I'm also proposing that the city contract with a federal lobbyist in Washington, D.C. to help these efforts. And again, that would not be funded through general fund resources. The area of Northwestern University, the council has spoken on a couple of different occasions over the last couple of months about our efforts working with Northwestern University. That will continue. The council has asked in its previous discussion for a single point of contact on the city staff for Northwestern University issues for members of the community. And I've asked our Assistant City Manager, Marty Lyons, as he transitions away from that dual role as Assistant City Manager and Finance Director to a single role as the Assistant City Manager, he will be that point person among the senior city staff as community issues arise with Northwestern University. The area of police and fire pension funds, I am proposing with this budget that the council consider an additional cut beyond the changes required for the, for the budget deficit, an additional $1.5 million, either to be used to put toward the police and fire pension fund or toward reserves. Because as you know, we're looking to drain about $2 million out of those reserves. And so hopefully, we can continue to look very responsibly at that. As you know, Mayor Tisdale left us this morning to meet with the Speaker of the Illinois House of Representatives, Michael Madigan, and she's there right now, to talk about issues of police and fire pension funding. So we'll continue to advocate, and certainly the role of any staff members we put forward to, to state relations. We'll continue to work with our city and village partners throughout Illinois on that. And finally, in the area of safety issues, the council has identified specific issues regarding safety, both police, fire, through our Public Works and Transportation divisions. And we'll continue to talk about that, and we believe we can do a lot of those things within existing budgets. The process that we had with the community and with our employees, I think, was very informative. We, we reached out through multiple meetings. We reached out through the internet, through television, and really came away with four specific items that really helped inform this budget process. The first was that the community and our employees think we should live within our means. And this budget has no new revenue, no new tax revenues, has no use of one-time monies. We're proposing a budget that would be supported by ongoing revenues, and I think that's very important. Second was to focus on the basics. We enjoy a tremendous quality of life here in the city of Evanston, but in talking with the community and talking with our employees, when we're facing budget reductions, the clear message we received was we should focus on the basic municipal services that we have. In the area of employee costs, certainly we heard from the community that we should look very carefully at the costs associated with the employees of the city of Evanston. And with this budget, we're proposing no cost of living increases for our employees, no step increases for our non-represented employees. We're looking at myself, the Assistant City Manager, and our department directors taking a 5 percent salary reduction, and also looking at asking our employees to pay more for health insurance. Those are big numbers. And as you look at the solutions for the budget, there are a number of those that are going to be impacting all city employees in addition to the specific employee reductions. And then finally, the area of raise non-tax revenues. We heard that from the community. We've heard that from our employees. And I believe with the items that we're proposing, and I'll talk a little bit more specifically about those in a moment, really focusing on raising money that's not tax money. I have three goals for this budget. The first is the area of customer service. I don't think we do a great job at customer service. We have wonderfully dedicated employees, but I hear constantly from members of the community and from the members of this council that we should be more focused on the customer. And my goal through this next budget and in the years moving forward is to make the city of Evanston the most customer-focused organization, not only in Illinois, but I hope we'll be looked to from around the United States to being focused on the customer. And again, Mr. McCray's new assignment really will help crystallize that, and I think that we can make lots of progress as a community just by being more customer-focused. The second is to raise non-tax revenues. And I've talked a little bit about this already, but by having an intergovernmental relations staff member, having better representation through lobbyists in Washington are important pieces, but there's also two additional pieces. I'm proposing in this budget that we reassign a staff member, Shani Jackson, to be a citywide volunteer coordinator. There are lots of resources within the city of Evanston to help move the community forward, and I believe that we need to harness those resources in a more efficient and effective way than we currently do. And I believe by having a volunteer coordinator on the staff, that will help move us forward in that area. Finally, in the area of raising non-tax revenues, I'm also proposing that the city hire a development officer. Very common in nonprofits. You've seen it happen now with the school districts. I think we need to be on the forefront as a city to have someone help us raise money from outside resources for probably specific things versus general things. But as you've heard this morning, issues with the library, I would like to see us raise money to support equipment needs of our police and fire departments, our Parks and Recreation facilities and operations. I think those are all great opportunities. And by building a team of people within our city to raise non-tax revenues, I don't think that we wouldn't, will always need to look to raising taxes when we need to raise money. There's lots of other ways to do that, and I think that this current budget coming up can be a way to do that. And then finally, another, final goal that I have for the budget process is to operate the city of Evanston as efficiently and economically as possible. And included in the budget are several reorganizations, taking the Finance Department, the Human Resource Department, our Computer Operations, and our Purchasing Division, combining them all into one operation, refocusing our Community Development Department as a Community and Economic Development Department to move the Human Services portion of our Health Department operations and not in any way diminish them, but to try to enhance them by providing greater focus in certain areas, so moving youth services and senior services to our Parks Department, and with the Parks Department, renaming the Parks Department to Parks Recreation and Community Services. So that is going to be the department that focuses on people, not buildings, but people, and providing those services. And I think that readjustment of focus in our Parks Recreation and Community Services Department under Doug Gainer's leadership will be tremendously important. So we'd like to move forward. I'd like to introduce Marty Lyons, our Assistant City Manager, to walk through, you know, some of the 30,000-foot level budget issues. That will be followed by our individual department directors talking about their budget. The additional $1.5 million of reductions, we would like to come back to you at your next meeting and walk through those more specifically. But again, those additional reductions are not meant to balance the budget, but would be meant to either put toward the police and fire pension fund or to our reserves. Mr. Lyons?
Members of council, ladies and gentlemen, it was very nice to always talk with staff about energy. And Mr. Bobekowitz just went through that with a lot of energy, and I'm going to try to do the same. going to try to do the same. He already highlighted several of the items, so in some cases where you see me coming through or going through a graph quickly, just know that I'm happy to go back and revisit those. But this is also kind of a roadmap that will be on our website, be published, for folks to always come back and look at when they have questions regarding this year's budget. So the total budget, we've been focusing on the general fund, but the total budget is $234 million. It's not really changing that much because of a variety of things that we're doing, bringing in self-insured health insurance, changing some of our interfund transfers, those kinds of items. The proposed budget adjusted for interfund transfers, and these are the funds that we pay ourself. When the general fund has health insurance, they pay a premium to the insurance fund. That shows up in the $234 million, but it's not an extra expense to the citizens. So that's fund accounting and how it must be practiced in the United States, how we have it set up. So we have the general fund, and then you see, we also have all of these other funds. We will focus on the general fund today, but in subsequent meetings, we'll also be talking about these other funds, and many of you may be involved in these funds. So here's a look at it. $234 million, 40% is our general fund, and it's approximately $85 million this year, down from a high of $94 million in previous years. So you can see, we do spend money in a variety of funds, and probably the one that's more of interest to people is the next one, where do our departments spend dollars? So for instance, the Public Works Department includes our water, our sewer, it includes our fleet services. The economic development, or community development includes our Economic Development Fund. Administration, we don't really spend 17% of our money on administration out of the $234 million. That is a breakdown there. We have our insurance money, which is $15 million, is included in there, so that's a tremendous amount. Take that out of there, and the administration amount comes back down to under that 10% that you'd expect for administration. General fund revenues by type, where do we get our money from? And this is, we usually have a property tax debate, but our property taxes make up less than 20%, about 20% right around there. If you include our TIFs in there, it's a little over 20%, but we are not an agency totally dependent on property taxes. So these are our revenues by source, and you can see, as I was just referring to, the property taxes, that does include our TIF property taxes. Those are monies that we're aggregating for economic development presently, and they will revert back to all the taxing bodies when the TIF closes. And we're seeing that this year with the downtown two TIF. So our challenge is this year is the revenues, they do fluctuate from year to year. Just from that previous slide, realize that property taxes are a very stable source of revenue. We usually collect 99% or greater of the amount levied. That's how the Illinois tax law works. But we can't have that same level of certainty with all of our other revenues, including water, sewer, et cetera. Those can change based on usage. Our service demands, though, have, are fairly well-established, and they have not declined in volume, and they have not declined in costs. So normally, I have a graph coming up, but normally, we see revenues not growing as fast as expenses, and that's our budget challenge. This year is a little different. So this is similar to the slide that we had earlier on the third quarter report, and you can see, though, in this one, if our budget went through with normal operations and no changes, where we said no new taxes, no changes in services, this is where we would end up, and I call your attention to the lower right-hand, where we have $3.0 million in remaining fund balance. So that's about one month's, not even quite one month's payroll, one payroll, all we would have in reserve for police, fire, public works, et cetera, services. So as I noted before, usually what you have is both arrows going up, but the revenue not going up as much. This year, we have $4.7 million decrease in revenues over what we projected last year, and a $4.8 million increase in expenses. And that increase is, if we keep services where they're at, if all of our contracts, where we have 3% increases, if all of those go into place, and along with some of our other increased insurance costs, that's what would create that $4.8 million increase, and that's about a 5% increase. So again, our revenues are down, but our revenues are down by 5% despite the fact that next year, we project to get $1.7 million in new property taxes from the TIF district closing. That is not a property tax increase to any resident. That is a redistribution of the property taxes that were accumulated within the TIF district, the downtown two TIF district, and now are shared by all of the taxing bodies in the city, including the two school districts. The pension levy is what took most of that out. We had a $1.2 million increase in the pension levy, so you see that the one-time infusion of revenue from that TIF property tax, we're really devoting towards that pension levy funding requirement, and it's a council goal, so that's a good use of the dollars. Our economic revenues, those that are driven by the economy, are all down. It's as simple as it can be. Sales taxes, we're lucky, we have sales taxes that are not based on a lot of large car dealerships. You say Schaumburg, you say any of the, some of the suburbs that have, still have a lot of those high-ticket items, their sales taxes are down much farther. The balance that we have in this community for our sales tax generators has helped us tremendously this year. That being said, the level of unemployment has really taken a toll on income taxes, down $1.3 million. Our transfer tax is down by 50%. We had a high of almost $4 million. We're anticipating coming in at $1.5 to $1.6 million this year in real estate transfer taxes. Utility taxes are down mainly due to natural gas. The pricing dropped through the basement on natural gas, and that's not a bad thing for us as consumers, but it does impact how we fund general fund operations. And finally, building permits also reflect the economy, and they are down, but we're doing fairly well compared to the economy in general. One of the things that was brought up before was interfund transfers. Last year, we used several interfund transfers to balance the budget and not have layoffs. So we're not repeating them this year. So we have a $500,000 transfer that was from the Debt Service Fund last year, will not be repeated this year. A $300,000 transfer from the Economic Development Fund that will not be repeated this year. And then on top of that, while the TIF fund gave us $1.7 million, it also was helpful in funding operations in the downtown, and it won't be there any longer to help fund those operations, so that transfer has decreased. So personnel costs, included in the draft budget that creates the $9.5 million deficit, we have our wage increases that would be according to contract and with merit and step increases. So that's 4% is the amount that was put in. We also had the IMRF pension increase of 47%, and that really is, a majority of that is due to the payment of our early retirement initiative that took place in '07, '08. For anyone who'd like to see, we'll put that online, the analysis that we did on the ERI, where we, it truly is a savings, but now we're paying the additional bill. We amortize the early retirement incentive over a 10-year timeframe, and we hope to reduce this rate a little bit by doing some work on how we pay the 10-year debt off. The other part of the reason our IMRF went up was market losses, which hit every pension fund. The net of that, though, is, is our total IMRF costs are about $2.2 to $2.3 million. We're looking at a $1 million increase. So that's that 47%. As I noted before, the police and fire pension, that's not a general fund cost, but it takes from the same pot that the general fund uses, property taxes. So healthcare costs, we looked at approximately an inflationary increase, and for 800 employees, that's 750,000. We are working at increasing, I'm sorry, at introducing new benefit plans, many of you've heard of them, high deductible health plans and other types of risk-sharing arrangements with staff to try and control our costs on healthcare. The one that is a difficult one for, to explain, our liability costs, we have had a large increase in the settlement of our liability claims. Not necessarily in the occurrence, but we've had settlements of our workers' compensation claims and settlements of some of our large liability costs, and that's a cash flow issue. We do have some reserves for this, but in order to make sure we don't end up with no reserves, we self-fund our liability. So we need to have a million-dollar increase from the general fund to pay for liability claims and workers' comp claims. So this is going to be spread out amongst all the departments that are incurring these costs. So how are we going to address the $9.5 million? I'm going to go through a couple of the citywide adjustments, and then we're going to have the directors come up and talk about their individual departments. Citywide, what we looked at for, on the revenue side, with no tax increase, well, we did an analysis on our parking structure. We quite often use the term "payment in lieu of taxes," pilot. So if our parking structures were taxable structures, they're right in the middle of the downtown, and we have lots of parking structures that, in fact, do pay taxes, and our parking structures are a part of our parking fund, which operates as a business, if they were paying taxes, we estimated that they would pay in approximately $418,000 in property taxes. So given that, we're looking at a payment from the parking fund to the general fund as the owner of the decks, a payment in lieu of those taxes of $200,000. And this is not a one-time. This is proposing that that would stay there, year after year. A transfer from the township, we are very grateful to the township, who again has stepped up and said that they would help support community purchase services for mental health board. So last year was $300,000, and this year it is $400,000. We are also asking the school districts to pay for the cost of school liaison officers. We currently have three police officers that operate in our school districts on a full-time basis for security and a variety of purposes. The biggest ticket item for our revenues is, and we've had many council meetings on this subject, is a change in the way we handle yard waste, refuse, and recycling. And what we are proposing is a change in our yard waste fee that will, once it's completely up and going for an entire year, will be approximately $1.2 to $1.3 million. We're only proposing a partial year for this coming year, so that'll be $950,000. And then a refuse fee. Our current refuse fee is $6.95, and the average for this area can be anywhere between $16 and $18 for a month's service. So we are looking at, that $500,000 increase is not an increase by any means up to that level, and I don't have the per dollar right off the top of my head, but I'd be happy to give that to anyone who was interested. So that's $2.3 million in non-property tax-related revenues that we are, and we didn't look at raising any of our other taxes as well, because we realized there isn't any revenue to give in many of these cases. So the next part is citywide budget adjustments on the expenses side, and the manager already alluded to these, so here you can see the numbers associated with this. No cost of living adjustment, no merit increase for non-represented employees, an increase in 5% to employee insurance contributions, the director and manager pay cut of 5%. One of the things that's in here that's not a cut is, if we're going to have less staff, and we're down approximately 10 to 11% since 2006, '07, we're recommending that we increase the training for those staff. So this is a $200,000 increase in training to be spread across all departments, police, fire, public works, all of those departments, so that the staff who are here have the ability to provide service in an efficient manner. We are looking for unpaid holidays. Rather than use the term furlough, we're going the route of unpaid holidays for all staff, and approximately one day of the city payroll is about 180,000, so three days, $540,000. Finally, as I referred to before, we have the early retirement incentive to pay off, and IMRF is charging a large interest rate. So we are looking to refinance that debt independent of them, pay it off all at once, and pay an interest rate probably about half the 7.5% that they're charging us right now, and that should save each year on that million-dollar increase that I referred to. So staffing-wise, this slide shows that from 2006, 2007, we've gone down about 10% in total staffing, and nearly all of it's been in the general fund. For the most part, other funds, they are on a charge-for-service, so we've been able to handle that through the charges for services in those funds. But in the general property tax and sales tax-supported general fund, it's been a more difficult proposition. So you can see that there has been substantial reductions even prior to this year's decrease. I'll handle the city manager's office, and then Joellen Daley in the Administrative Services Department will come up next. So this is a brief look, the city manager's office. We're looking to go to an electronic highlights newsletter. As we've referenced earlier today and heard many comments, a reduction in the funding for the ECMC. The elimination of the Assistant City Manager position, that's not me, that's the, we had two Assistant City Managers, and we're looking to eliminate that. And in place of that, we're looking to find a better or more efficient solution, and that is to take advantage of the International City Managers Fellow Program, where we can have, in essence, an assistant to the city manager through ICMA at a much lower cost, and it's also great for the training of that individual, et cetera, but it's $60,000, so what you see is a net decrease of $135,000 in that personnel area. As referenced by one of our speakers earlier today, because of all the changes that we're looking at this year, we know we're going to reorganize many, many departments, we have included in this budget a $200,000 increase in the contingency, so that we can adapt to changes as we go forward with our service changes without coming back for a full-blown budget amendment to do so. I think I just went through that one, so, I'm sorry, Grant. Grant Farrar will come up next. I apologize, Grant.
Before-
I couldn't put it in the first time, and then I skipped you.
Before Grant gets started, can you explain to us, in the citywide budget adjustments, the expense adjustments, who is included in that? Are the bargaining unit members included in those numbers?
In the no cost of living adjustment, yes, and in the no merit increase, no.
What about, what about increased 5% employee insurance contribution?
Yes.
They are included in that?
And I'm sorry, I'll go through them all, Madam Chair. The, obviously, the director pay cut, no. New training funds, those would benefit all staff. The unpaid holidays, yes, that is for all staff, and the refinancing of the Illinois Retirement, that will just impact IMRF costs.
So the unpaid holidays, there doesn't have to be an agreement, or there already has been?
There does have to be an agreement, and we will be working on that. The alternative to that is, is if we can't get that $540,000 for all, then we would have to look for alternative savings in same-staffing area.
All right. What I'm just trying to do is, you know, we're the council to approve these cuts. What are etched in stone, and what are problematic? And I think the ones that have to be agreed to by the bargaining units are questionable. And so I just would like some budget memo indicating what the possibilities are here, were there not agreements by the bargaining units?
We will follow up at the next meeting.
Also, in the citywide budget adjustment, revenue adjustments, I think there are some challenges there as well, because I haven't heard, and maybe you just forgot to tell us, that there was an agreement by the school districts to reimburse us $290,000?
We have not reached an agreement. We have had discussions with them, unfavorable discussions so far. The goal here is, at the same time that the TIF is dissolving, that the timing would be right to allow- be right to allow this to happen...
It is very right. I agree with you, it's very right. I just think we have to be as realistic as possible on the ones, the items we don't have control over.
That is correct.
And so, that, also, I'm not sure how the yard waste fee and the refuse fee was calculated, but they're, given people's budget problems, the taxpayer budget problems, people are going to be making adjustments on how to avoid the yard waste fee. I mean, I know in my household, we are going to be doing that. And then the refuse fee, that increase only applies to those people who don't accept a smaller can, right?
It's per the report that was in there, and I'll defer to Suzette if she's in on the specifics.
But we're counting on everybody, and what I want to know about that number is, does that count on everybody keeping the current large can? That's, I don't need that right now.
No, it does not. But we will respond in writing on that one as well.
But what does it, what does it include? I don't need it right now, but going forward.
We will, we will have a summary for that.
Okay.
Thank you, Marty. Members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Grant Farrar. I'm the city attorney, and I'm here to touch upon some of the things that the law department...
Grant, Grant, hold on. People are asking that we lower the lighting so we can see this better?
Just this side. This side.
You do that? It is kind of hard. Not enough contrast. Yeah. There you go. Excellent. Thank you, Marissa.
Always better to bring light on a situation. With respect to the law department, we're moving forward, and we're following some of the directives of the council and the citizen input. There's going to be a new emphasis upon customer service. This department, moving forward, is going to be doing the following, and I'll highlight the categories and then break it out in a little further detail. Number one, cost-effectiveness and favorable results. Moving forward, we're looking to assume much more of a litigation-based approach in the department. The efficiencies that are going to accrue from this include a quicker case resolution, a better handle on expenses, reducing outside expenses on outside counsel, and streamlining case management. If you think of a case, it's a continuum, and being able to come in on the ground floor on an internal approach is going to result in great efficiencies. We also have the enhanced responsiveness priority, and this relates to strategic plan goal number 10. We're talking about being a better steward of the Evanston tax dollars, and we're also talking about being more responsive to council direction, to supporting staff, and to responding to residents. These are all priorities that will be addressed going forward. With respect to the improved efficiency, this reorganization citywide and how it impacts the law department is going to be very crucial in terms of permitting staff such as Mr. McCray and Ms. Jackson to assume duties relative to volunteer and customer service. One of the ways that this is going to be done is going to be transferring the Liquor Control Board Administration to the legal department. We also believe that this is going to result in a streamlined process with respect to liquor applications. As referring to the transfer of administrative adjudication, this is also going to result in efficiencies. We're going to be looking at how we can supervise those operations and enhance what already works, the collection methods with respect to those categories. Finally, there's a very, very strong need, especially in this economic climate, to scrutinize, evaluate, and adjust the risk management strategies for city operations. Our department, moving forward, is going to take the lead on this, and what that will result in is also reducing exposure to claims before they occur, and hopefully reducing exposure to claims that may already exist. These are all situations and approaches that are going to result in cost savings, efficient use of resources, and utilizing the tools and the people that we have now to better serve the city. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I don't see any light.
Thank you.
Good morning, members of the council, city manager, city clerk. I'm Joellen Daly. I'm going to be talking to you this morning about administrative services as it relates to BPAT, which will be renamed Information Technology, Human Resources, and Finance. And before I run through these slides, I just want to give you an overview of what I'm going to be talking about. You will see on the slides that the recommended reductions relate to both salaries and expenses, that the reorganization that has been proposed includes middle-management positions, some frontline positions, and contractual positions. In some cases, the reductions will result in some elimination of some work that we've been doing. In other cases, we are able to make some reductions as a result of efficiencies found. In addition to that, we'll continue to look at outsourcing and efficiency moving forward, and I'll give an example of that as I run through this. As far as administrative services is concerned, I'm sorry, information technology, you can see that there are several positions, some of which are vacant. The management analyst position, the second one that appears, is going to be eliminated, and as a result of that, the work that was related to our BPI and our performance measurement is not going to be conducted. In addition, in BPAT, again, which will be called information technology, there were two consultants that were on staff. One position was vacant, and the other one is going to be released. So, as a result of that, the work that was being completed will be redistributed to other employees. As I mentioned, there are some expense reductions. You can see that there will not be as much computer replacement. We do still have some funds for that, but the schedule for replacement will be lengthened as a result of this reduction, and that the training budget for the people who remain in information technology will be reduced for division employees. In addition to that, we are eliminating a middle-management GIS manager position. We will still have two GIS people available to work in that regard. And lastly, again, you can see the contractual positions as well as technical support. That will be reduced by the number of positions there, to our full-time equivalent positions. Again, we are going to be looking at outsourcing. We will continue to look at that, and we are anticipating outsourcing some of our technical support to find more efficiency. When we move into finance and human resources, there is, again, a list of positions that you see, as well as some expenses. Also, if you look at the FTE reduction of 9.5, that number relates to the employees, the permanent employees in the city of Evanston. There are three additional people that are going to be reduced for a total of 12.5 related to administrative services. Again, the first one you can see is a contractual position. It's vacant right now in administrative adjudication. That one will be eliminated. We are combining the HR director with a finance director for an administrative services director, and I will be working in that capacity. The revenue manager will be eliminated. Again, that's a middle-management position. The duties of the revenue manager will be absorbed by the accounting manager and the revenue supervisor. Budget analyst, this year you may see that the budget has been streamlined. Next year, the effort will be concerted between the city manager's office and administrative services, and through efficiency, we think we can do it with less staff. Just to finish up, the compensation and benefits manager, for those of you that were here last year, you may remember we changed the assistant human resources director's position to this position as a result of the person who left due to the early retirement incentive. We never filled that position, and the reason for it is we did a comprehensive benefits audit, as well as transferring the duties related to classification and compensation to another position in HR. So, we were able to, through efficiency, to leave that job open, so we are eliminating it this year, a proposing elimination. We did cut, in previous years, the tuition reimbursement program. This is an expense. When I presented this to you before, there were about 27 employees participating. We are proposing eliminating the remainder of the funds for tuition reimbursement, simply because we just do not have the funds to continue the funding of the program. If funds are available in the future, we can restore it, but right now, we are recommending that we not fund the program. As far as training is concerned, Marty already highlighted the fact that the city manager's proposing additional training funds citywide. A portion of that will be coming from the human resources budget, $40,000. So, the increase in 2040 of that is coming from human resources citywide training to be transferred to all departments. And lastly, there is an accounting clerk in the revenue department. That is being eliminated, and we anticipate efficiencies by combining revenue and parking operations, so we feel that we can eliminate that position in the upcoming year. I'll turn it over to Lehman Walker in Community Development.
Joellen, could you answer a question? And when we were talking about the information technology area, you indicated we were eliminating consultants, that we had on staff in a vacant position. And then you said you were going to be outsourcing some technical support. How is that different than consultants? I think maybe I just didn't understand the lingo.
In information technology, there are two contractual positions, and there are consultants. There will still be some consulting money available, and we will look at additional efficiency to see if we can further eliminate positions in the future by outsourcing the service.
Right. But outsourcing some technical support is really the use of consultants, right? Where needed.
Madam Mayor, pro temp, members of the council, I think we're looking at a little bit of a different approach, where we would be contracting with companies, so we wouldn't be individuals necessarily. As far as the area of technical support, you're all familiar with the help desk features. We would contract with the company. We wouldn't be having individuals, but that company would provide the service, and whatever the individuals happened to be working that day would be having. So, it's a slightly different approach, trying to get, again, more bang for a buck.
Good morning. I'm Lehman Walker. I'm the Director of Community Development. With the current level of development activity, the Community Development Department will be able to make some adjustments in the areas that are identified on that slide. Essentially, what we're proposing is we will eliminate one of the electrical inspector positions that will be vacant as a result of a retirement. We will eliminate all temporary employees. We have two clerical positions that are currently occupied by temporary staff. We will eliminate those two positions. We will reduce overtime. Well, I better go to the next. We will reduce overtime. Our current overtime budget is about $33,000. We'll reduce that by $20,000, largely as a result, there'll be, there have been fewer call-outs, and that as a result of the lower level of development activity. And we're proposing to eliminate one of the zoning officers. We have two current zoning officers in the department. We're doing some realignment by combining the zoning function with the planning function, and that will provide us with some staff efficiencies, and we feel we can reduce one position without it affecting services. That essentially are the proposed reductions in the Community Development Department.
Good morning. I'm the Chief of Police, Richard Eddington, and I'm here to talk about the service reductions that are planned for the upcoming fiscal year in the police department. I'd like to run through these quickly, but an overview of some of the programs up there that are operational-related, just for that 30,000-foot overview we're talking about today. A quick and dirty equation is about $50 for every hour of overtime is represented in these numbers, and so there's approximately $140,000 reduction in overtime that results in 2,800 hours of reduced delivered police service. I'd like to start off with the summer plan, and with the proposed reduction of that plan to $70,000, that'll be a reduction of 50% of that plan from about 2,800 hours to 1,400 patrol hours. The elimination of the off-campus student patrol, this is an endeavor by the Evanston Police Department and the Northwestern University Police Department, where we patrol off-campus housing during the prime party periods at the beginning of school and at the end of school. With this program would be eliminated under this proposal. Elimination of this special weekend beat, we refer to that as B-87. This was funded by TIF. As Marty Lyons mentioned, that TIF funding has come to a close, so we will close out that service. The police planner is more of an internal service. That will be addressed by redistributing those duties between existing command staff, and also, we will acquire new software that will make multiple people working on general orders a little bit easier to accomplish. Elimination of a records clerk position. This is the second year in a row we've eliminated a records position. This is due in part to automation and the efficiencies identified by the Records Bureau Director Debbie Akimian and Deputy Chief Wiedlin, who continued to hone down what we really need to get out of the records position. Elimination of the social service position, this is from a three-person unit to a two-person unit. That will result in an adjustment of services. One of the easiest services I can point to is, in the past, we had always provided transportation to court for violence victims. That will no longer be possible. This is, was a key part of our domestic violence protocol, but will have to be adjusted, and unless there's exigent circumstances, we will not be providing that service. The retirement of a sworn desk officer, this concludes a multi-year program to civilianize the desk, and for budget purposes, the key factor is the reduction of the authorized strength of sworn officers from 165 to 164. That has significant long-term impacts on pension issues and other topics. Reduction of the INU football game detail, the INU home games result in about $10,000 expenditure of overtime of city monies. INU has a detail that they work, and that remains untouched, but by reducing that detail to about half, it will add significant travel time to and from the game, and will also reduce our profile in the neighborhoods during game days. That's the quick highlights that I have. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
I just want to make one comment to those listening in, and that is that everybody's participating here. This is a half-a-million-dollar cut from our police department, and we're about to hear from the fire department, over $400,000 cut from the fire department is being recommended. So, everybody's in this together, just so you know, nobody's being singled out or picked
Good morning, Michael Whalen. I'm going to represent fire in this proposal, and you can see here that fire's proposal...
Michael, speak in here.
And, Madam Mayor, pro temp, members of the council, for the community's awareness, Fire Chief Allen Burkowski had a death in the family yesterday, and so that is why the chief is not with us this morning.
So, fire's proposal is, includes a reduction of shift staffing overtime of $275,000. It also includes the elimination of a sworn position of $120,000, and then a reduction in obligatory overtime of approximately $38,000. We believe, and our analysis indicates, that our present daily staffing of 26 is already bare bones in light of the demand for our service, the array of services we provide, and the level of citizen expectation of our service delivery. However, the city's financial situation necessitated, no, in fact dictated, that we find measures to cut or trim the deficit. We didn't think that it would be a good strategic decision to further reduce our force, as we lost one sworn firefighter position in 2009, and you saw on the first slide that there is an elimination of a second sworn firefighter position in 2010. Thus, the proposal includes the $275,000 reduction in shift staffing overtime. At present, we staff our shift daily to 20... At present, we staff our shift daily to twenty-six members. That allows us to place three members each on five fire engines, three members each on two aerial ladder trucks, two members on each of two ambulances, and a shift chief. Today, if we didn't, if we determined that we did not have twenty-six people available, what we would do is call people back who are off-duty, on overtime, until we reached the twenty-six level. The proposal would allow that twenty-six number to drop to twenty-three before we called people back off-duty and placed them on overtime to staff. What that does is whenever we find out that we're going to be short the daily required staffing, either because of vacations and Cali Days, which are scheduled time off, or in combination with unscheduled time off, like injuries and illnesses, the number will drop to twenty-three and require us to place an engine or an aerial ladder truck out of service at any point below twenty-six, which means that that twenty-sixth level will then drop to twenty-three, and that's at the point we'll start to hire back. We, when we do that, the reason we have to drop an engine or an aerial truck is because we staff those types of apparatus at a minimum already of three people. Our desired staffing level would be four, but we're already staffing at three, and if we fall below the three level, one or two people on it, that type of apparatus is an inefficient and ineffective use of those resource, that apparatus and those personnel resources. So, they would be, any number below twenty-six would be redeployed to other equipment. Secondly, with the proposal, the proposal includes the elimination of what is a sworn firefighting position, although it's an administrative staff position, not a shift position. This will require us to remix and then redistribute all the administrative functions of the fire department among the three remaining administrators. Lastly, I need to go back to the first slide to show you that the reduction in obligatory overtime of thirty-eight thousand dollars would be largely taken up by reducing the number of new hired personnel we send to EMT basic training and EMT paramedic training. Are there any questions that I might be able to address at this time?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, members of the council, city manager, I'm Yvonda Thomas, Director of Health and Human Services, and I'm going to go through our specific proposed reductions for Health and Human Services. As you can see with the elimination of our dental services, it's about one hundred and fifty-three thousand. Reduction of the city of Evanston's contribution to community purchase services, which are funding allocations to mental health service providers in the community of two hundred thousand, and to eliminate our part-time, long-term care ombudsman, which totals about three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. So, what this means, it's the elimination of the children's dental clinic will require that about two thousand children are served annually by the clinic to identify a new source for dental care, and ninety percent of the children served by the pediatric dental clinic right now are low-income families. And so, the cost of the dental care for these children are typically covered by an insurance carrier for Illinois called All Kids. The challenge that we may face with All Kids coverage for Evanston is that there are limited providers in this community that actually allow for All Kids coverage, and that fifty percent of the dental clinic patients are limited English-speaking, come from limited English-speaking homes, and seek services from the clinic due to the availability of Spanish-speaking staff. Although, four Evanston dental practices do accept All Kids, because of the state's financial woes, All Kids reimbursement is slow and limited at best. The majority provide preventative care, and refer patients that require more costly restorative care for dental services have to be referred outside of this community. And out of the four offices that we've identified in the community that provide pediatric care for children as relates to oral health, only two have Spanish-speaking staff available to treat pediatric dental patients. As it relates to the reduction of community purchase services, the city's contribution of two hundred thousand, it's a reduction in funding will affect a number of community residents served by the types of services provided by the social service agencies. The elimination of the long-term care ombudsman, the part-time position, this position, although it is a hundred percent grant-funded through the Illinois Department of Public Health to the Health and Human Services Department, we will still retain the services provided by that position and redistribute them to remaining staff, and honor the grant deliverables for that grant at the highest level possible.
Are there any questions?
I have some, Yvonda.
Yes.
Of the services provided by the Health Department, the city of Evanston, why was, I'm just wondering what the thinking was, why was the dental clinic chosen to be eliminated versus something else? Can you analyze that?
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, members of the council, let me answer that question. We looked at the direct delivery of medical services, as you all know, that the city of Evanston was very involved in the direct delivery of medical services for a number of years, when those adjustments were made, I believe, three years ago, this was the remaining direct delivery. We're looking to change the model of our Health Department, moving our remaining human services pieces to the Department of Parks Recreation, to the Department of Community and Economic Development, leaving the Health Department to focus on the basic public health services that they have. But I think another key component, which really was inspired by members of the council during the H1N1 difficulties we faced in the summer and fall, was the ability of our staff, particularly our Director, Yvonda Thomas, to gather private resources to deliver services. And I think what I would like to see the Health Department do as we move forward is serve as a catalyst for the community to provide not only dental services for those in need, but all the other services that the city stopped providing, the direct medical services a few years ago, and look for alternate solutions. So, not only can we make up the loss on the dental side, but also try to make up, in a more aggressive way, the losses that we experienced three years ago, through collaboratives, through working with private providers, through working with our two local hospitals.
Okay, thank you, I understand. Why are we eliminating a service that is a hundred percent grant-funded?
We currently have-
Getting the ombudsman.
Sure. We currently have a full-time regional ombudsman, and so, we feel that with the staffing that we have and the reallocation of resources, that we can still accommodate the services rendered by that position.
Could we, and I know who, I mean, she's a fabulous employee, but can we still apply for that grant to affect her salary?
The proposed reduction, and that-
No, can we use, can we use the grant that we're currently getting? Can we still apply for that?
Yes, we can.
Oh, we can, okay.
Yes, we can.
So, we can eliminate point six-tenths of a person, but still get the grant-
That is correct.
For the current, oh, that's excellent, okay, thank you very much. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonda.
Good morning, Mayor, Pro Tem, city manager, Alderman, how are you? I'm Suzette Eggleston, the interim Public Works Director, and I'm going to talk about the proposed reductions in the Public Works Department. The total reduction in Public Works is just over eight hundred thousand dollars, and that represents nine FTE positions, and of the nine, only three are occupied. The first impacted area within Public Works is fleet services, and we're proposing the elimination of one supervisor, one mechanic, and one auto-service worker. And we're also proposing the reduction of the service hours. We currently operate sixteen hours a day, and we want to reduce that to twelve-point-five hours, which is consistent with what other municipalities provide in terms of service. The impact of the proposed, huh, excuse me, the impacts, the impacts of what we're proposing for fleet services would result in the reduction of a mechanic, of one mechanic, we reduced our fleet by thirteen, and the proposed reductions in sanitation would also reduce our fleet by four additional garbage trucks, and the, some of the most costly equipment that were included in those thirteen were the costly equipment for maintenance. So, we believe that we would still be able to provide the same level of mechanic service for the remaining fleet without any impact.
Could you just restate that about the elimination of the pieces of equipment? I mean, I'm not sure everybody listening is familiar with the term fleet. What are you talking about?
Okay, we have over three hundred pieces of equipment, city vehicles, that includes police cars, fire trucks, parking enforcement jeeps, snowplows, front-end loaders, et cetera, the whole gamut, and it includes all the equipment that is operated by every department. And over the last couple of budget cycles, we looked at our fleet operations and tried to reduce the amount of equipment that we had based on carpooling, and basically redundancy, and we share with other sections that may have similar equipment. And in doing that, we were able to reduce the fleet by thirteen pieces of equipment, plus the, not four, but five garbage trucks that are proposed in the sanitation reorganization piece.
So, you don't just mean cars?
No, no.
Trucks?
No, and in fact, the reduction, the thirteen pieces of equipment that were reduced, of that thirteen, there were only, there was only two cars. The rest were from pickup trucks up to garbage trucks.
So, that's a huge decrease.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
In addition to the equipment reduction, we're also looking at a reduction, I said, as I mentioned before, in the service hours. Between, we have an afternoon shift that currently is a full eight-hour shift, and we really don't get a tremendous amount of service calls, they spend their time primarily working on equipment that was already brought in during the day shift, which is when the bulk of our equipment is operating, during the daytime operations of seven AM to three We have a lead mechanic position that currently works in conjunction with the supervisor on the afternoon shift, and that lead mechanic could, in fact, lead that shift for four and a half hours a day alone, without the aid of a supervisor. The auto-service worker position has primarily, their function has been primarily to ferry vehicles from the police department, whether it's from the police department to our fleet services facilities, or when we have heavier equipment that needs to be sent out to a contractor for service, some of the bigger pieces of equipment. And a lot of those functions have already been transferred, and the remainder will be transferred back to the department to provide those ferrying services. In the sanitation reorganization, the five hundred and sixty thousand dollars represents the switching of the operations proposal that would allow for sanitation workers to switch to collect recycling and for us to contract out garbage. That would result in the reduction of four FTE positions and five pieces of equipment. The streets reorganization impact, which is about, which will result in, I can't even read that, so, sixty thousand, thank you. And that involves the elimination of one Public Works maintenance worker, two position, we are going to transfer the sign shop, the three sign workers into the streets function and eliminate a Public Works maintenance worker, reclassify them to incorporate those duties as well as their assigned duties, and make full utilization of the entire resources of the street division in that endeavor. In addition, we are proposing to reclassify Public Works Supervisor to a Solid Waste Coordinator to address all of the changes that we're proposing relative to the sanitation reorganization. There's a lot of civil enforcement, a lot of coordination that will be involved to make that transition run smoothly. And finally, the street sweeping reorganization that we're proposing, we currently sweep the streets twice a month, and we're proposing that we reduce the schedule to once a month.
For all streets?
And madam mayor, Pro Tem, members of the council, we're looking to have a overall reduction of twenty-five thousand dollars in our street sweeping operation. We will come back to you with a plan to do that, because our feeling is that some streets will work monthly, some streets will need to be bi-weekly, and some may need more. We believe we can have a twenty-five thousand dollar reduction, and with the council's approval of the reduction, we'll come back with a specific plan after the budget.
Thank you, Suzette. All right, so, for those following along, the Public Works Department is being proposed to be reduced eight hundred eighty-one thousand dollars. Ms. Johns?
Good morning, council, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Mary Johns, Director of the Evanston Public Library, and you've all heard this morning what the impact of closing the branches will be from the public's perspective. Let me also add some of the impact from the library system's perspective. Clearly, the loss of direct neighborhood library service will be a result of closing the libraries, and the impact of the delivery of service in unknown ways certainly was addressed to some degree this morning, but I think we would still have discoveries to make about the loss of those services. Another issue in terms of closing the branches is the potential loss of talented people. It would be our hope that those folks who are displaced by the closing of the branch would be able to be transferred to fill vacancies that have been during this current fiscal year in a freeze. The impact of closing the branches also has an indication for the main library, which is that certainly some services would be redirected to the main library, and staff would need to absorb responsibility for providing some of those services, be it storytimes, programs, outreach services, to try to again take the services of the library to the entire community, which is indeed our goal. Developing alternate programs of delivery would also have to be considered. We would also be looking at the potential for longer waits for service at the main library in terms of increased service for those folks who would be able to move from branch library service to the main library. That would also include, in addition to the staff at the branches, those, the closing of the branches would also affect one staff member who does maintenance for the branches. Then, the section on outsourcing technical services would indeed affect a number of staff members and help us realize some savings in terms of labor costs. In addition, the idea of outsourcing gives us the opportunity to take advantage of the value-added services that a number of our vendors provide, so that our materials would arrive shelf-ready rather than us doing the processing and all of the cataloging. This is an advancement in much of the services that vendors have begun providing over the last number of years. It would also allow us to take greater advantage of online ordering and online invoicing, which then streamlines our process, which is, again, one of our major goals in terms of becoming a more efficient and effective part of the organization. And then, the final reduction of twenty-one thousand dollars in subscriptions relates to the periodicals and magazines that we provide, and we have been, for a number of months now, looking at all of our collections to determine those things that, in terms of magazines, that are available online, that we can get to through easy access with the online databases that we have that cover full-text- that cover full-text articles from the magazines. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Doug Gaynor, Director of Parks Forestry and Recreation, and in in our proposed reductions, as the city manager had indicated, we are proposed to change the name of our department and be, including some of the social services that have been provided in the Health and Human Services Department. And we will be bringing onboard some five individuals. And over the next few months, I'll be meeting with the Health and Human Services Director as well as those five employees to make a determination of what they're doing and how that fits with the, the, the goals and the vision of the city council. In order to meet the twenty-ten, eleven budget goals, the department proposed eliminating full and part-time positions, reorganize programs in order to reduce operating costs, and projected modest but attainable revenue increases in some areas. This slide outlines the proposed reductions of almost eight full-time equivalent positions. Two positions were vacated at the end of December as employees accepted the city's offer of voluntary resignation. Major impacts from the proposed cuts are listed, for instance. Few custodians will leave the buildings, being cleaned less often. Window washing will occur less frequently. In addition, there will be an under, undetermined negative impact on revenue as it's, we turn rooms over fairly frequently and quickly to accommodate the various programs that do generate revenue within the facilities. Clerical reduction at the Levy Center, or, excuse me, at Noise and Crown, we're going to slow down a little bit there. We're going to be closing some of our recreation centers earlier. We'll be opening them a little later. This will certainly have some impact on program, program revenue. The clerical position at the Levy Center will be replaced by one of the employees who will be transferred from the Health and Human Services Department. That employee will provide a dual role of currently what that position has been providing as well as basically running the business portion of the Levy Center. We're going to mitigate the impacts from the program manager staff cuts and the elimination of the public works supervisor job by shifting duties to other staff members, and this will increase the supervisor-to-employee ratio, and some tasks will either be delayed or eliminated. As I mentioned earlier, the department will continually evaluate our priorities based on the strategic plan and the visions. Response to service requests will be somewhat slower in some areas, but health and safety issues will not be affected, and graffiti removal, which has been very important, will continue to be a very high priority. Based on a three-year average, we've reduced overtime in our Parks Forestry Division, but we could still be severely impacted by uncontrolled events such as weather and, of course, the Evans, the Emerald Ash Bore problem that occurred about two years ago. Other such cuts spread throughout the division in order to minimize the impact. For example, the cultural art grant fund has been eliminated. Staff costs at the Mason Park Fieldhouse were reduced by proposing to use volunteers and by shortening the hours during the winter months based on a time period with low attendance, or no attendance. Swim beaches will close at seven-thirty all summer. In prior years, the beaches remained open until late through the end of July. The department conducts an annual fee survey to determine market rates. We're proposing some fee increases based on this information as well as the restructuring in programs in order to reflect participation trends. There's a, a whole host of very specific cuts. Two thousand dollars here, three thousand dollars there, in order for us to reach the almost one million dollar budget cuts in that, in our department. Think, Marty?
Doug, the, the one thing that really concerns me is whenever I see a reduction in janitorial services for our properties. The Levy Center is such a gem and is always very clean. And I, I would just like a budget memo from all those cuts that have to do not just you, with maintenance reductions on how we plan on filling the gap. On all the administrative and managerial cuts, we're always, we've been told by every speaker that those services or those duties will be spread to others, but not in the maintenance or janitorial, and I want to know how that's going to be covered.
We'll certainly provide that for you.
Yes, oh, no, 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 no. Wherever, not just even in, in recreation, wherever janitorial or maintenance is cut. Okay, Alderman Jean Baptiste?
The trend in the, the presentations have been more focused around, here are the cuts, you know, here's what we have to live with. But I'm not hearing as much information as to how we intend to compensate for some of the adjustments that we're making. You talk about opening centers later in the day and closing earlier. I suppose you'll come back with telling us which centers will be open later, close earlier, the impact on existing programs. You talk about eliminating services we offer at Mason Park and replacing staff with volunteers. And I'm not sure how, if we intend to have those services there, we, you know, where are the volunteers, where are they coming from? You know, perhaps you could come back and talk about how we make things go with the changes that you're making, okay?
Sure.
And, and even the, the maintenance and, and janitorial services, I'm not sure whether or not the fact that certain places will be cleaned less often, whether you perceive that that will have, you know, qualitative impact in terms of, you know, how the places look and what we've been doing, or perhaps you may have evaluated that we had more janitorial staff on hand than we needed, and therefore, things will be status quo generally. So if you would come back and give us your sense, we'll better understand it.
That's, that's another budget memo.
I got that.
All right, and we always have budget memos, and these are the kinds of things we have to get clarified. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who's next, anybody else? Wind it up?
It's a tough act to follow, but I, I do have a, a few final slides. Again, I'm Marty Lyons, Assistant City Manager. So, Mr. Manager, with your permission, I'd like to go through the additional, or do you wish to break at this point?
I'll leave that to the, to the Mayor Protem. We've, we will, let me speak to the slide that's up right now, the next two slides. In addition to the reductions to balance the budget, we've also put forward an additional million and a half dollars of reductions. These slides deal with that. There are additional citywide reductions, and then there are reductions by departments. And we hope to talk more with you as we move forward in this process about these reductions. Conversely, they are also available to you should there be things that you've heard proposed for reduction that you would like to restore. These are additional reductions that could be substituted for that. So we have that available to you. We would propose, Madam Mayor Protem, members of the council, at your next meeting to talk further about the details of the other funds. We've also not spoken regarding the capital budget, so we would propose to come back at your next meeting in two weeks and start with those discussions. Madam Mayor, members of the council, we appreciate your patience for this overview. We wanted to kind of give you soup to nuts at the outset of these discussions with what's proposed for reduction. And so, Madam Mayor Protem, that concludes our presentation and would leave it to your judgment if you'd like comments from the council or to adjourn at this point.
I think, I, I think it would be really helpful, especially people who have stayed tuned and who have stayed here, that we begin our discussion of this budget. It is, you know, January already, and we've not once had an opportunity to discuss among ourselves the impact of this budget and the way we feel about the various cuts and proposals. So let's open the floor up for discussion. I'm looking at my lights. Oops. Alderman Grover and then Alderman Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I'm needing more information, actually, at this point. On my list of things includes, as Alderman Burris referred to earlier, on information about the franchise fee and our contractual obligations to ECMC, how those franchise agreements operate and what the numbers are. I understand that the city, I don't, I don't see in the, my materials here how much we've budgeted for the school crossing guard program. And I understood it was about four hundred thousand dollars, at least for last year. And it would be helpful to know, have we ever engaged School District Sixty-Five, at least, in discussions about how to share those expenses?
Do you have that, I mean, is?
Madam Mayor, there's
Do you want an answer right now, or do you want a budget memo so that we all get the answer?
I'd like information in the way that we can all digest it and study it.
Madam Mayor Protem, members of the council, there is one additional presentation we had prepared in, in anticipation of a lot of discussion on the Evanston Community Media Center. If you would like, Madam Mayor Protem, we could, I think it's ten slides. We could run through that, or we could merely provide it in written materials.
Could we, I think it would be great to hear it, but could we, people have questions on the tip of their tongue right now?
Okay, great, very good.
Run through it a little and then maybe stop at quarter of for that presentation?
And, and we will take all of these questions and provide answers in writing. We've shared with you the document that we've started. We'll continue to revise that document, and so you don't have to wait until the next meeting. As soon as we have the information, we'll make it available, so thank you.
Alderman Wilson?
I, I like everyone else. I'm, of course, looking for some more information. I guess I'm going to use this time as a little bit of a plug, though. I am having a fourth ward meeting on Tuesday night at seven-thirty, and what I'd like to do is have as many people as possible attend that. And in thinking about attending, what I'd like everybody to consider is not only the things that you'd like to keep, but I would like people to take a look at the budget, look at the cuts, and look at the capital improvement program, which is also on the city website, and tell me what you feel like you can live without, because these, these are very serious, serious times, and we have a lot of work to do and a lot of cuts to make. And if you're looking to keep something, something else is going to have to go. So I'd like everybody to keep that in mind when they're, when they're making their prioritizations. So I look forward to seeing as many of you as possible on Tuesday. That is going to be at the YMCA on Grove, and that's also posted on the city website.
All right, Alderman Wynn, Burris, Fisk, and Holmes. So let's start with Alderman Wynn.
Yes, thank you, Alderman Rainey. I, I'd like to get more information on the slide that we just saw. General fund summary, additional reductions continue, well, the potential additional reductions. There, we have a list here that simply provides the, the heading and then the amount of money, and I'd like to understand what that would mean. For instance, just pulling one off the list, a hundred thousand dollar additional reduction in the police department or forestry, a hundred fifty thousand dollars, because if, if we're going to swap and switch, I want to know what I'm swapping and switching for. So if we could get a little bit more detail on what the, what that means to substitute one of these reductions for another one that we would rather retain, I'd like to understand that better.
And if you notice on there, there's some duplications, like hit 'em again, hit 'em again, you know? Really, a repeat of another reduction, so.
I have one additional question, Alderman Rainey, if I can. This would be for Parks and Recreation. I'd like to have a memo analyzing the impact of closing the beaches at seven-thirty rather than eight. If we have information about, from past usage of our beaches, what that would mean to have the lifeguards leave at seven-thirty.
And also on revenue?
On revenue as well.
Alderman Burris?
I, I was actually echo what Alderman Wilson had to say about, thank you for all the emails and phone calls. And most of you that I responded to, they, one of the things I keep asking is, we keep hearing about what not to cut, we'd love to hear what to cut. People that came to the budget workshops gave us a lot of ideas of what to cut, and I think the city manager took those out of the budget, and now we're hearing from a lot of other folks saying, no, 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 don't cut those things. So please let us know what to cut, that'd be very helpful. And I do have a couple of questions. The increase of five percent employee insurance contribution, wondering how you came up with the five percent, and is there any talk more about doing it on a sliding scale? Once again, that's an employee that makes forty thousand is paying the same amount as an employee that makes a hundred ninety thousand, doesn't seem equitable. We may want to look at that for additional revenue there. Also, the salaries that are indicated in our budget book are, is that salary and benefits or just salary? I wasn't sure, and maybe I The salaries that are listed in this, in our budget book, is it just salary or is it salary and benefits?
The information listed in the transmittal memo is salary and benefits.
Okay, thanks, just wanted to clarify.
We have that in a memo, though, I mean, all of these que
Sure, absolutely.
I want to make sure somebody's taken
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Also wanted to follow up on the, the notion of a development fund, a fundraising entity. Can we get more information about how you plan to put that together? What kind of 501(c)(3) and what things that you're thinking about would be part of the development operations? Along those same lines, the volunteer opportunities, I think we, that's a great idea. Where would we envision that those volunteers would help us in our budget reductions? Would that be someone answering phones? What does that look like? Once again, sorry for so much here. Also, the yard waste, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money. I'm not sure that people will actually pay that much for yard waste. Also, one of the things that I heard from, from a resident is many of the trees that the leaves are coming down are on city parkways, and we're then charging our residents to pick up leaves from the trees that are really city-owned trees. So is there a way to have yard waste compost piles at many parks, not just one? Because I know previously it was at one, people complained of an odor. So I think that we need to look at some equitability here that all these trees are coming down that are our trees, and then we're charging residents. Just to put that out there. And I think that that's all for now, thanks.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to make sure that we got a memo at least on the communications that, and conversations that we're having with cooperative agencies or, and, for example, the school district or Northwestern University, the elimination of the off-campus student patrol at twenty thousand dollars obviously benefits the university as well. I'd like to find out the status of talks with them. Also, I'd like to have a little bit more information about the special weekend beat in the downtown and exactly what that, what that beat entails and how much of that is centered on, on student activity in the downtown. And that's, that's all. Oh, one, one last thing. I've promised my constituents that I will look for every possible way to find alternate sources of revenue and look at other budget cuts rather than the libraries. So I appreciate Alderman Wynn's question on that.
Alderman Holmes?
If we could look at the Forest Street Department, Parks and Forest Street Department in terms of, of, of the possible cuts, I know Alderman Wynn mentioned the hundred and fifty thousand, but I'm looking at a four million dollar budget or expenses in that department, and could we look at the possibility of what would happen if we maybe did not do every year some of the treatment on the, on the trees? How, how would that affect them? What, what would that do? So I would like some more detailed information on that, because it is four million dollars that, you know, that's in that one department.
Set it on? Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I'd like to make this quick, because I know there's been a lot of passion expressed for saving both the branch libraries and the media center. I'd like to ask the city manager to look into what possibilities we have in terms of private partnerships, volunteerism, and fundraising. I know that there's, there are groups very active and can collaborate with the city staff in doing this. They're very anxious, they're very organized, and they would really like to get this started. The biggest fear among all of us is once the The biggest fear among all of us is once the, particularly with the branch libraries, once they were, would be closed on February 28th, unlike some other programs that could be reinstated with additional funds, I fear that the branch libraries would go away forever. So I think there's a sort of a two-pronged approach. We need to have a somewhat secure plan in that we can fund them, find the money to fund them, and then a long-term plan that involves a lot of work on the part of the community if we want to keep these branches. And by all means, talk about opening up a south or southwest branch to service that part of the city that has been underserved. Thank you.
Alderman Grover.
If I may, please have just a little more information about the dental clinic, number of hours that the clinic has been open, and if we have information about the demographics of the 1,800 children who use those services. And if there's a way to get information or perspective from the mental health board as to what $200,000 in cuts would mean and how they might reallocate their funds with $200,000 fewer dollars. I don't know if the mental health board will be meeting and able to deliberate any time before we actually talk about it, but it'd be good to have an idea from the mental health board, what their budget would look like, what the allocations might look like. Thank you.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Yeah. I wanted to extend my request for Parks and Recreation to all of the departments that had addressed potential cuts. I thought that Administrative Services did a good job in terms of laying out how they would compensate, but I didn't hear that from all of the other departments. So, city manager, if you can just give us a sense of how the services will continue to be provided. Secondly, for the Law Department, I heard the general objectives. I'm not sure what staffing you got there, how you, you know, what services are being provided by these staff members and how you intend to implement those objectives with the staff that you have. I don't know whether you have enough lawyers, enough, you know, support staff or what. The other matter concerns the summer program for the police department. The chief talks about reduction. He didn't talk about what services will remain in terms of the summer initiatives. And a number of us up here who have wards where, you know, summertime becomes a little difficult for us, we'd like to know what the chief will do to continue to provide us the necessary services. Finally, maybe the presentation on ECMC will do this, but I'd like to get a sense. I heard, you know, one of the commentators said that the cost of moving ECMC was estimated at, I think, $500,000 to $800,000 or something of that nature. I don't know. I had not heard that. I don't remember hearing that from our people. So I don't know whether, you know, city manager Dave Cook has that information sitting somewhere, whether you could provide us some information as to what that cost will be. And, you know, can we absorb ECMC in this building? Because I know that their rent is about $95,000 a year. And is this something that could be phased out over time? And, you know, we need to get a sense of how do we look for alternatives as opposed to the straight-up cut.
And Alderman Jean Baptiste, we'll come back to you. The presentation you're about to see doesn't contain that information.
All right. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions to add. One of the things that we did with the hotel tax while the downtown TIF was operating was we rebated to the hotels a certain percentage of the tax that they paid into the general fund. And I went and, I looked at the Economic Development Fund. I tried to understand what we were doing with the hotel tax, and I can't really see that. So if I could have an analysis of the hotel tax and how much we're going to be getting now and how much, anyway, that'd be fine. And then also, I want staff to review and provide for us on one sheet, the chargeback for city services for those charges in the TIF district. The city services that we're charging to the TIF districts. My last review of that showed that we really needed to beef up those charges, and that is a revenue generator. So those are mine. All right, shall we move on now to the ECMC presentation?
Certainly. Madam Mayor Protam, members of the council, this has been certainly a point of the community discussion. Joe McCray, the assistant to the city manager, is here. He has a presentation that we put together to kind of just provide some factual basis regarding the agreements that we have with the cable television provider as well as the agreement with ECMC. We've also done a little bit of research, what other comparable communities in northern Illinois are doing in the area of public access cable television. Mr. McCray, I think we have a printed version of that agreement, of that presentation, which will be passed around the council dais. Mr. McCray, it's all yours.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm going to talk to you about the ECMC funding. I'm passing around the PowerPoint presentation. I'm going to give you some time to have that pour around. The agenda for my presentation will be, I'll summarize most of this, but just so you know, we're going to be talking about the cable franchise fees. Number two, the PEG fees. PEG stands for Public Educational Government for those particular channels. ECMC services, I'll try to summarize those services that they provide to the city and then how other municipalities fund their public access specific channel. What is a franchise agreement? The city grants Comcast a franchise so they can operate and provide cable services to our community. And we give them authorization to install, maintain their facilities on our right-of-ways as a result of that franchise. Our franchise with Comcast is non-exclusive, so it does not exclude competition, but it is a franchise agreement nonetheless. As a result of that franchise, we get franchise fees, which are intended to compensate the city for the use of our streets and public ways. Those franchise fees, which have been discussed, come to the city as general fund revenues that are allocated for use during the annual budget process by the city council. So that's a big point. We have other franchise agreements. Comcast, you can see roughly what they brought in last year. AT&amp;T, as you know, with their V-RAD installations, they're just getting started, so their number is a little bit smaller. And then Nycor, just to give you an example of another type of utility franchise that we have that gives us franchise fees. The current cable franchise that we have with Comcast expires in November 2011. AT&amp;T, as you all know or may not know, in 2007 was provided a statewide franchise. And so now they are building their infrastructure to provide video services. They actually don't provide, they actually don't call their services cable, they call it video services. Nonetheless, both franchises, for Comcast and AT&amp;T, both, as a result of their franchise, has to remit 5% of their gross revenue back to the city of Evanston. So 5% of the businesses, of the business that they generate here from our subscribers has to come back to us, and that's the franchise fee. You see there that last year's total was about $853,000. In the current year budget, we allocated 300, the city allocated $353,000, roughly 40%, if you will, of that franchise fee dollars toward ECMC operations. The current year estimate for, the current year budget for franchise fees combined is $890,000 for this current year. Just kind of put it in perspective. Franchise fees per the franchise agreement. So our franchise agreement with Comcast states that they will remit to the city 5% of their gross revenues from our, from the operations in the city, back to the city. Franchise agreement, let me iterate this. Franchise agreement does not mandate that the city allocate any portion of the franchise fee revenue for PEG channel support. It's a council decision. So council decides where and how that money gets allocated. It's not specified in the franchise agreement. ECMC service agreement on franchise fees. As you all know, or the council may know, has to know that the city has a service agreement with ECMC for the provision of services. This is taken from Section 17A of that agreement. It says, "The city will provide funding for PEG access. Funding will be provided as follows: Annually from the franchise fee, an amount not to exceed that specified in the annual city budget." Meaning that council designates what that amount will be. There's no minimum or maximum set in the actual agreement stating how much the city has to provide. It's determined by council during the budget process. And then secondly, there's a second fee, PEG fee, which we're going to discuss in a little bit, which is completely separate, federally mandated fee, that can only be spent on PEG facilities and equipment. And that's mandated by law. And we'll talk more about that. PEG fee allocation, capital expenditures for franchise agreement. On your cable bill, you'll note that there is a 35 cent per month charge on each subscriber's bill if you're with Comcast. That is the PEG fee. That PEG fee comes to the city and is pretty much a pass. We get all of that money, and all of that money goes to ECMC to the amount of about $80,000 for their capital and, capital equipment, but basically technology and facility needs. That's mandated by the Cable Act. So they do get all of that money. It's roughly about $80,000 because they provide that service, completely separate of the franchise fees. You see there that in FY0809, that dollar amount was roughly about $81,000. AT&amp;T, AT&amp;T, as a result of their statewide franchise, pays an additional 1% for their PEG fee of their gross revenues to us, which also gets, which is also received by the city and passed on to ECMC. And because they're just starting out, they've not built their system out completely, the total amount, dollar amount for that was approximately $1,300. It's important to note again that that PEG fee is earmarked by federal law for PEG channel capital, facilities and equipment purchases only. So we don't spend that money. We pass that on to ECMC. A little bit about the total funding from the city to ECMC. As you look at the last few years, we've been providing in '08, '07, '08, $418,000. '08, '09, $433,000. '09, $10,433,000. And in this current year, proposed year, you'll see the reduction in the franchise fees. It's being reduced by $200 from the normal allocation of $353,000 to $153,000, with the PEG fee still going to that organization for a total of $233,000 allocation this year. Just a little bit about ECMC, and I'm going to summarize. They were established in 1986, reorganized in 1997, and at that point, they handled all three channels. So when they were initially created in '86, they handled the public access channel. Now they handle all three channels. Their estimated budget is approximately $500,000. I just showed you the allocation from the city, which is $433,000 approximately. District 65 shifts in about $33,000, and they have some other incomes there. They maintain the city's three PEG channels. So Channel 6, which is public access, which is citizen-generated programming. Channel 16, which is government access, which is our generated programming, and educational access, which is school-based programming. They also provide, as has been detailed this morning, numerous opportunities for training and production and editing and other such things. So it's a summary. It's not an all-intensive, all-inclusive piece.
You're showing only one educational channel up there.
Right.
There are two.
Are there two? What's the...
There are two.
18.
Eighteen, too.
I know, but it's showing Channel 19.
Eighteen as well, right?
I guess it's a mistake.
Eighteen as well.
Which brings me to a question that I had before I heard your presentation. Why can't, why can't the two school districts share a channel? It's my understanding, since this whole controversy has erupted, that these channels are very valuable to cable vision or to whomever is the provider. And that by selling back a channel, we could make some significant money. And so I'm wondering about that. I know that would take some kind of collaboration between these two school districts, but I'm telling you, when you watch these channels all day long, they're completely blank, other than messages, completely blank. Also, I asked the city manager, why, why we couldn't share our channel with the community? And evidently, nobody does that. But, you know, we're here to think outside the box. And I'm wondering, and I, you know, I read all this stuff about, oh, what if the Nazis want to put on a program right after a council meeting? You know, I don't know about that. I'm sure there's some way to control the programming. I'm not sure about it. But that was another question I had. So what is the, what is the value of a channel to cable vision were we to release one or two? What are the legalities? And I did look at the franchise agreement. I didn't see anything having to do with this. What is the legality of combining public access and government? And what do the districts think about sharing a channel?
And Madam Mayor Protam, members of the council, we'll come back with that information.
That's, that's good. I had one other question. Oh, I also read that in Washington, DC, the PEG channels are financed not by the franchise fee being returned to them by the district, but by a separate charge on the cable bill, a subscriber charge in support of public access channels.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, we have that at 35 cents a month.
No, this is separate.
That's the, we have a separate charge?
I know, I know. But what, what I read was that the access channels are supported not by the franchise fee being returned by some proportion. Not, this is not for, this is not for equipment. This is to finance the running of their channels. So I'm...
And we'd be happy to look at what's Washington, DC is doing that's maybe different than Evanston.
That's, yeah. Okay, so, anyway.
Mr. McCray has a few more slides.
Okay. Sorry. Some of the services that they provide, again, a summary, not all. They cable cast our meetings live, as they're doing right now. Tape and rebroadcast our public meetings, some of the meetings that they cover. City council, administration, public works, PND, human services, special meetings, budget workshops. As a general mode, we pay about $200 per meeting for meetings outside of city council meetings. Community budget, live call-in show. They also maintain our community calendar, that generator on those channels, et cetera. Again, a summary, not all of what they do. This is pretty much my last slide. A discussion of, shows how other municipalities fund their public access channel. And as you look at these communities, and there's another slide, they get franchise fees as well, but they're not, we contacted several of them, they're not paying for their public access channel.
Who is?
They are, their public access channel is provided through Comcast. They take advantage of Comcast's regional public access channel for their public access channel only. So it would be the equivalent of our Channel 6.
Oh, I see.
And so you'll see here that Arlington Heights does that, Oak Park does that, Schaumburg, Skokie, Willmore.
So are you saying, then, that they have no educational channel and no government channel?
They... The, the governments that we surveyed here only do their government channel. So their public access channel is provided by Comcast, and their government, their educational channels are worked out between Comcast and the high schools. It's my estimation. But we can provide more information about that as well.
Can you also provide information as to whether or not, because it looks like they're still getting their franchise fee, right?
They are.
That's correct.
Is there any way we could renegotiate with the provider to rearrange the way our funding is?
I'm looking to that.
And Madam Mayor, pro tem members of the council, what Comcast does, and they do this not only here in the Chicago area, but really all over the country now, is that they aggregate communities. So here in Evanston, we have one channel for the city of Evanston. What Comcast does here in the Chicago area is has, have regional channels, so the producer perhaps may be in Skokie, but the program may be seen in Northbrook and Glenview as well. So that is what they have done, and these are generally issues that are negotiated through the franchise agreements with those communities. So that's the key difference. The key difference is that it's not a specific channel geared toward a specific jurisdiction, but it is a regional channel. And certainly, there's a number of questions that have come up from the council. We'll be having additional discussions with Comcast to answer these questions, and we'll come back to you and give you a more complete answer as to the regional public access program that Comcast has in other northern Illinois communities.
That's good. Great. All right.
Just want to entertain, any questions?
Alderman Burris?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, why did ECMC reorganize as a not-for-profit in 1986? If we can get some information on why that was done. I'm sure that there was a, there were good reason at the time. And, you know, I've had several conversations, obviously, as everyone else has, about ECMC, and would like more information about how other cable or other access channels, what kind of fundraising they do. You know, I would love to see a fundraising plan from this not-for-profit board. I know I've talked to Steve about that, and he said that they're working on that. Their board, what are they doing? Do they give 100% back to the organization? Usually, not-for-profits that have a board, 100% of the board members give a donation of, of some sort. So just looking at the whole funding mechanism as an overall not-for-profit that needs to sort of, you know, float on its own bottom, if we're not, is a city not required to give a franchise, part of the franchise fee? How can we help this organization, which I think is extremely valuable to the city, get, you know, on their own legs and be able to move forward? Because I think it would be dreadful to lose this, but at the same time, I realize that there are budget considerations. Thanks.
Alderman John Baptiste?
Yes, it's my understanding that the franchise agreement with Comcast is, is coming up for renegotiation next year. Please give us a sense of the history of, what's the trend in terms of the franchise fee agreements we've had in the past? Also, look, project in the future, with AT&amp;T being on the scene, what might be the impact on the revenue that we get from Comcast? Because I would think that eventually, AT&amp;T will compete for that client base. If, you know, just do some projections and stuff like that.
Madam Mayor, Alderman John Baptiste, Joe, can you maybe go back a couple of slides? Because we have, from that survey of other communities, can, we had it at one point broken out, I guess we aggregated it, but, but those numbers have increased substantially in other communities where AT&amp;T came out earlier. So I thought we had it on the slide. We'll come back to you.
We aggregated, I can give you that information afterwards.
And you're, because you're absolutely correct.
What to expect and, you know.
We can give you some averages, absolutely.
And maybe they would like to start talking to us now, you know? Alderman Holmes?
Just wondered, isn't there something different about Channel 18, though, in the high school? I'm just, I don't have to know now, but...
Certainly, we'll, we'll give you the overview.
I think there's something different. Isn't there something different about that channel than why?
It's still a channel.
Well, I know it is, but there's something...
It's a different relationship, I believe.
I remember that. I'm just, so if we could have that information?
Certainly.
Anybody else? Also, an inquiry as to why there can't be certain kinds of paid advertising on any of the channels.
Yeah.
Especially, I'm thinking candidate.
Yes. Alderman Rainey, if I could just add to that, I think it's related to the not-for-profit status that you raised. Why did we do that? And what benefits are we getting? Because if we're not raising funds, people are not donating, you know, then a different strategy may be in order. You know, a for-profit status or some kind of, I think, you know, there may be some other status other than that.
All right, we have followed Mayor Tisdale's edict, and we are finished by 1 o'clock. So I'll, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
You made it with an iron fist.
Lionel, you were just... In a velvet glove, in a velvet glove.
You were just more thoughtful today.